Oh, I know, I'm like that on my next ticket. It's horrible. Yes, of course, these do. Not the more than married. Said, no, we're just idiots who did it a few weeks ago.
This is our first.
Okay, you missed it.
We missed something. Good job.
Good job. You're welcome anytime.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sometimes I bring more chairs over, but this is not gonna do that today. Facebook and on YouTube, but it's live on Facebook and it goes on YouTube for next day. Or five days. Um, this one that's live is on the politics page, Politics and Bird Events Facebook. And then my YouTube channel is just like this. She already did it. She just turned it on, sir. She needs to, it needs a code, you can.
He's less beautiful in this room.
Oh, well. I know, I mean, it's not, nothing's gonna matter, especially with the doors open. They both have sound, just this one's live. Yeah, and then this one's a part copy, so like this one will cut out, like, because there's so many people in the room. I'll get connection issues, so I always have a backup. Thank you. Um, it's on YouTube and Facebook. But I also have a freelance reporter for his county magazines, usually in our following.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody, here's me, hey guys, I'm sure it's very busy, but I'd like to let you know that if you want to leave a public comment today, so that all of your questions are answered, please fill out one of these lists that are right over here on this table. Somebody over there will call your name, so your voice can be heard.
Thank you, Leanne.
It is the day, right? You keep that in your car. Yeah, you need to keep that in your car. Now we know. Now it's gonna get me more. Yeah, awesome. I've seen all behind it. This is gonna be more than an hour, like, standing in the university.
Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, my name is Andrew Alpalm, I'm the City Clerk for the City of Lemon Grove. If you haven't already, the published meeting agenda PowerPoint presentation and additional material can be found on the table right as you enter the community center. Also on that table, you will find a speaker slip. Make sure on that speaker slip that all of the deals are completed. Specifically what I'm looking for tonight on that speaker slip is your name printed clearly along with the agenda item to which you want to speak to tonight. If it's an item that is or a matter that is not on today's agenda, please cross off the section that just says public comment, speak on any item not on the agenda. If you have any other questions, feel free to approach me here before we get started. Also, as another announcement, Congressman Gassfield will not be joining us today. Please come down with a serious, serious notice. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Lemon Grove, the City Council meeting. I just wanna thank each and every one of you for coming out here tonight, um, as we are here to conduct the City of Lemon Grove business. Uh, before we get started, um, I'd like to ask our City Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Councilmember Gassfield, absent. Mayor Prince Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Verderen. Absent. Mayor Vasquez.
Here.
Mayor Vasquez, we have a corner.
I thank you so very much. I will ask councilwoman Snow to lead us to the plate.
The Republicans, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, staff has one change to the agenda. We'd like to fill item number one D, the ratification. Staff member that is supposed to be part of this process without due today, and so we'd like to continue it to a future city council.
Councilmember Verderen here, I am present, just stuck out very briefly. Welcome to everybody who's here. Thank you for being here.
Uh, thank you so much for providing updates, and, um, I'd like to note that we do not have any presentations tonight. And we move, we will move forward to our public comment portion of the meeting. And so during the general public comment portion of this meeting, the public may express their concerns not pertaining to items on the agenda tonight. Please. Please note that in accordance to state law, the City Council is not permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directed to follow up with the speaker, or the topic will be brought back to the City Council for consideration at a future date. Part of Lemon Grove Municipal Code Chapter 2.14.1.1.0, all remarks must be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to one individual council member. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please observe the green, yellow, and red light. Please observe the green, yellow, and red light timer at the podium. The red light indicates that it is time for the next speaker to approach the podium to begin speaking. I do have speaker slips here, and, um, there are quite a number. I'd like to let everyone know upfront that I'm gonna take the first ten slips, and then the remaining slips will be heard after our, because I'm, tonight we actually have two very important public hearings, uh, hearing, and, uh, it's definitely important in business. And so we have to take care of the city business, but we also wanna make sure that they don't have an opportunity to speak. As a reminder, debating, demonstrations, and comments from the audience or testimony will not be relevant to the matters being considered. So that will not be permitted. Uh, it is important that everyone here, uh, allow each speaker to be heard. When you step up to the podium to speak, please make sure that your, your, um, mouth is close to the microphone so that we can pick up all the words that you are saying, but also those who are in the audience, if you can keep the comments, you know, at a minimum, again, there's no debating or demonstrations, but, um, you know, we wanna make sure that everyone is heard, not just by us here at the platform, but by everyone in the audience. And so I do have the first, uh, ten slips here. We'll start off with John L. Wood, followed by Matt Kostrowski.
John L. Wood.
If he can please bring your mic up, please.
The last meeting over at the auditorium. Behavior was outrageous. When you're addressing people that are in charge, you don't yell, you don't scream, you don't, and you let people speak. That didn't happen over there. I haven't been here for a whole long time, only been here since seventy-seven, but I've attended more meetings than anybody else in this town. All that about that, okay. On the creek, on my federal, needs to be cleared. Those portions has notified property owner to clean it. The property owner is Toyota. They haven't done anything to it. Overgrown with palm trees that were cut years ago. They were cut incorrectly. And the creek is not flowing. Creek has always held some tuck in here. It's not flowing anymore. Our segment.
Thank you very much. Next we have Matt Kostrowski, followed by Brian Salgado, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your name.
Good evening, Council. My name is Matt Kostrowski, and you're representing ASME, um, regarding this for the city. I just wanna give it up to you on bargaining. Um, we've, we've provided a counter to the city's fiscal proposal. We appreciate that the city provided us. Um, and regarding, um, outside employment, I just wanna let you know there's, what I brought up during bargain session, and if you're aware, is regarding pregnancy leave for workers here in the city. Um, currently, your policy is, is that if, um, people are out for pregnancy, um, they must use their own time, whether it's sick time or vacation time for that. Uh, we have some new employees that are meeting with the city, um, not enough time to actually earn that time, and because you do not do disability, um, for, for city, for city employees, um, they would then not be eligible for that, um, pregnancy leave with state. Means that we would have workers, I'm gonna have a worker, for example, who'll actually be out of work, um, after she gives birth, and she'll be not getting any pay at all. Um, we've also proposed to City catastrophic leave that'll allow our members to even pull that amount, um, which I'm not sure where that is at the moment. But I just wanted to bring up to the Council that, um, for pregnancy, it's an important thing that our members be allowed to, uh, give birth, be able to be home, and not lose, and not be unemployed in the sense that they make no money at all and not be able to survive. So we're hoping the City Council will look at providing these people with, um, um, pregnancy leave that actually pays them, um, since there is not an ability, because you do not do, um, take disability to allow them. So that's all I have, and I appreciate the time to address you all.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Brian Salgado, followed by Michelle Pur.
Thank you guys for letting me speak. Um, I just wanted to speak in behalf of basically the tin cans that you're trying to put up on Palm Avenue. Um, I've been a resident of Lemon Grove ever since I've been born. Um, I've seen all the trends and everything like that going on with this city and this neighborhood, and I am just very against putting them in that particular area. They just built some, they're rated at million-dollar homes, right there, right next to where they're trying to put them. Also, we have children's schools right there, as well as everything like that. I just think it's a very bad area to put that. And the fact of the matter that we did not even have a chance to even speak our opinion on it, or anything like that, is appalling. And I'm here just to speak about that I am fully against it. I don't think it's right for the particular area that you guys are trying to put them in, and I just don't like it. I've been homeowner for five years, thank God, in this, in this neighborhood, and I don't wanna see it go to poop, we'll use a politically correct word. It's been a very nice neighborhood, and I pay my taxes just like everybody else in this room, and we're all against it, as you guys can see. We got a lot of people here, and we just, you know, wanna deal with it. We see what this causes, we see what kind of wreck it causes to the neighborhoods and everything like that, and I'm just fully against it. I thank you guys for letting me speak. That's all I have to say on the matter, and hopefully we can come to a conclusion on what we're gonna do with this.
Uh, before Michelle Pur makes comments, I wanna reemphasize something here, and that is debating, demonstrations, and comments from the audience or testimony which is not relevant to any matters being considered, will not be permitted tonight. Um, as for the comments that were just shared, I just wanna thank you for sharing those comments, but also to let you know that city staff will pass them along to the county as what you are speaking of is a county-led project. It is not a City of Lemon Grove project, so I want to be very clear about that because, um, it's a very, it's very important that you understand that. So any comments that are shared here tonight regarding an idea. Gentlemen in the back with the tan hat on, there will be no yelling or screaming. Gentlemen in the tan hat, there will be no yelling and screaming. Wanna make sure they are hugged for tonight. I will now turn it over to Michelle Pur, uh, to provide comments. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, this is the deputy of the city, ASME. Um, I just would like to reinforce what I've been speaking about, about the providing of the opportunity for the leave. It is a very important, um, and I, um, City of Lemon Grove, it has profits, and that is a duty for the Democrats to pay any money, but it allows other employees to be able to donate that leave for someone that needs it, um, just for their support, for any help that's or any needs. So I'm hoping that you will, um, put that into this new contract, which will be publicly, and also do, uh, just allowing that for anybody, all of your employees who need to take out a trip.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Stephen Vero, followed by Carl Finster, and again, I apologize for mispronouncing names.
Please speak into the microphone here. I just wanna let you know, I walk, uh, hit, uh, four, 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 half a mile, and we had three other accidents on Central Avenue, going out of the house. On those, uh, Monday, Monday morning around three o'clock, and they were hit real. On Monday, Monday morning around three o'clock, in April. I did suffer a hit, that's Monday morning, around three o'clock, another hit, right? And, um, these are speed bumps on Central Avenue, none has been done. Bring this up every time, it seems like you guys don't pay attention, you don't listen, whatever, I don't know what's going on. Even across the street, I almost get hit, and it's like speed up. And most speed bumps, um, schools, schools don't have any speed bumps, especially San Miguel when that little boy got hit. Lots have been done with that. I mean, the road looks like, like shit. The road, the road, you can repair, you know, these cabins and stuff like that, but these fixes streets, you know? Looks like shit, but a hellhole around here, you know? You have the homeless people living down the street, Central Avenue, I don't know where they're crafting inside the street or whatever, because they're, they do camps there, like, the basic glass. It seems like, how do you guys listen, you know? One person up there listening, but, but, um, you don't take us serious. And that's all I have to say, you know, get your act together, get the city cleaned up. I mean, there are more vacant buildings here than anything else, you know? Right, right, eight gone, and, you know, they're not even sensitive, they've been abandoned, all those windows have been broken. This looks like it's going, going shit, you know, it wouldn't help. Got to clean up the city before you, and the sheriff's department, you haven't even worked the night yet. What, what you guys been doing? Now you see, you got all this money and shit, fix the, fix the sheriff's department, and I had to go down to the parking lot to point out the suspects, the guy who hit my wall. And, and it's just ridiculous, you guys, you know? Want to put cabins here, you know, they didn't help the homeless, they don't, they don't want help. You know, these people walking down the street with three shopping carts, you know, and they walk the streets all the time, this, this looks pitiful, you know? That's all I have to say, you know? Guys, they ain't listening, and, and Mayor, I don't know why you come in here with no mask on. You put a mask on where you're sitting right there, because we can't see your face or what, maybe, I don't know. He's a pocket, he's not even looking at, of course, speaking.
Thank you very much. Your comments regarding speaking cabinets will be passed along to the county. Next we have, uh, Finster. Again, demonstrations and comments from the audience are not allowed. Thank you. We have men, men in the front row with the black shirt on with the pink sign, uh, please be quiet. Next we have Joe Salvado, followed by Anita Dicker. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your names. Please, let's, let's take a moment, because I want to make sure, sir, that you are heard, and I hear voices in the background, so we'll just wait a moment, until everyone quiets down. Thank you, sir. You may proceed.
First on the, the parste half, excuse me. Thank you for hearing me. This shelters that you want to put on, you don't work in Chula Vista, you haven't worked in San Francisco, you're employing a stray cat, you feed the cat one time, and what have you got? Now on Broadway Auto Electric, there's been three cars in the weekend alone, just one weekend, that have been smashed into, all the glass must have been blown out in one night. Nobody's feeling safe around here. My next-door neighbor, they called the sheriff about somebody in their back left yard who's a hooded, and the questions are, are they undressed? How do you know? Are they, does he have a weapon? I'm not going outside to find out. My next-door neighbor, the night after that, with a hooded person, they're, uh, they're broken into their garage and things stolen. You've got to start taking care of business here. This is, London Grove is going down the tubes, and it's going fast. No wonder all the businesses are moving out. I'm trying to sell everything I have, so I can get that out of here and get somewhere where I feel safe. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you so very much. Your comments will be shared, vice versa, so pass them along to the county of San Diego. Next we have Anita. Next we have Joe Salvado, followed by Anita, Anita Dicker. And we will wait for everyone to quiet down, so that the gentleman can be heard. It's important that we capture what you have to say, not only on the mics, but for everyone here.
Good evening, council.
Oh, one moment, sir. You may proceed.
Good evening, council. Name is Joe Salvado, a thirty-year retired military veteran, still working to support our active duty military in home of Lemon Grove. I've been resident of Lemon Grove since nineteen eighty-five. I was at the meeting presented by the county representatives, district court, on Thursday, for the project, build homeless sleeping containers on Troy Street, Lemon Grove. At which ninety-nine point five percent of the Lemon Grove residents that were present were in opposition to this and do not agree with this location. My understanding is that a vote was taken on Tuesday, sixteen July, to approve this project before it was even discussed with the residents that live in this town. Sticking a flyer in the door at someone's house, the date after the vote was taken, is not thought the most efficient to a resident of a proposed project. I believe this tactic was unprofessional and underhandly done by the county, after the homeless sleeping cabinets were disapproved by the residents of Spring Valley in a different location. I'm not sure if all of Lemon Grove City Council was fully aware of this proposal or had any safety issue. But we'd like to seek the city of Lemon Grove to get an injunction to stop this project from going any further, until it can be properly vetted and hopefully disapproved. My personal opinion, part of these type projects do not help the homeless, are a waste of taxpayers' money when used, causing the fabric of underlying problems for many of the people that are homeless. If the project gets approved, it will cause dangerous safety issues, and drastic increase in crime, crime, such as theft, violent assault, and bus stations, drug and alcohol incidents in adjacent neighborhoods and the community at large. This will increase the amount of homeless people in Lemon Grove and Spring Valley, most of which were never members of this community, nor from different areas, states, and countries. This will significantly decrease the value of homes in the area, which many of us were hard to pay for and live in a decent neighborhood. This location is close in close proximity of established schools and daycares that will put these children at risk. We are not a rich area that can afford a gated community with twenty-four-hour lights. Sleeping containers are not the answer and have been a continued failure throughout the state. It does nothing to help for the rehabilitation or addressing the true underlying issues that drove many of these homeless people into their current situation. These sleeping containers will endanger the safety and security of the surrounding neighborhoods and schools, and increase local crime rate. The elected borough politicians are going to continue to push these type projects, whether it is...
Thank you so much, sir, for your comments. Uh, city staff will...
That was a good one, yeah. That was a good one. That was a good one.
What's your opinion for Lemon Grove? Sir, your time is over.
Yeah, that was a good one. Thank you, thank you.
So, everybody here...
Yeah, thank you.
As mentioned, we need to give people the opportunity to speak. If you cannot stop clapping and making noise, then I would give you a warning.
That's what we're here for, to voice our opinion.
What I will do is give you a warning, and if you cannot, then we will have you removed. So I'm asking you to be kind and respectful.
Then we will have you removed from office.
I will now pass you on. Gray hat on, please refrain from making comments. If you do it again, then I will have you removed. Okay, so next we have Anita Dicker. Dickers, thank you so very much, uh, followed by Stephanie Becker.
All right. Uh, thank you for having me here. I, I too am going to address the little houses. I live on, uh, Palm Avenue, and, um, I, I'm not totally against housing for the homeless, but that, that area is horrible. There's no services for them. There is no medical in that area, there's no groceries in that area, there's nothing for them to go to during the day when they have to exit the, the houses. They need to have, be in more of an industrial area, uh, where they can be accommodated for, for their services and their needs also. That's, the, the street there is horrible. There's wrecks there all the time, I'm sure you all know that. And there's also, in that area right over there, there's volunteers in America who are disabled that are out on the streets during the day. Uh, there's several assisted living areas, uh, there's, uh, there's schools, there's, on, uh, plane, there is, uh, uh, if you look on Vegas, there's, uh, actually, there are actual predators all housed together in that area, plus others around that area, um, that, that. You have to watch out for also, um, they need to, um, they need to find a better place to face this. I don't know why they don't go on, away from the housing areas. Maybe where they all gather there on North Street, put the houses side by side down that way. That, I believe, is Caltrans, uh, land also, put it side by side, so people can go by and they can be looked at. Services can be maintained there, there's housing, there's, there's, um, medical. They need to find a better place than put it smack dab in the middle of the neighborhood where there is no services for them either. And, you know, honestly, you guys need to understand that things like this is going to happen, outrage is going to happen. If you go behind our backs, and, you know, you all should have known that we wasn't going to be available to the here, although we can last through already in the city of the state. That's not a regular in the city, and that's, you guys, to make sure that...
Thank you. And again, city staff will pass, um, your comments along to the county of San Diego. Finally, we have Stephanie Becker. And the remaining speaker slips will be heard after we get through the, um, the public hearing. Yes, you may proceed.
I guess we're starting at the beginning, which is the disgrace of this city council. At least three of you on this city council went behind your entire community's back and spoke to, or to supervisors, which is what started this whole thing. So to act up here while horrified that your community is irate, is absolutely absurd. To sit here on a city council and pretend that you're showing a sense of democracy, democracy, you're elected by your people. You're supposed to work for your people, you're a public servant. That is not public service, going to the board of supervisors, calling in, and saying, "Lemon Grove wants it." Lemon Grove doesn't want it. It can't hurt that much. In addition to all of that, Mayor, you sat here all night giving everybody warnings, telling them not to clap, made no comments, but you allow people to speak, you're having a little side conversation over here. Leader, a leader leads. People follow a leader. That's the respect you're giving your community, that's the respect you're getting in return. And it's very unfortunate. It's very unfortunate. I watched the disrespect here. To one councilwoman, I don't know any of you, but to one councilwoman, you all knew she was present. And you took a road call and made it like nobody knew she was here. How absurd. On top of that, we're supposed to trust you to take care of these little homes and keep them clean? And from the time our little finger is a roach visiting us, creeping around all around? I watched Lydia Romero kick it under his podium, and then I watched Mr. Pablo come and move the podium and watch it run away. And then you know what else I watched? I watched myself get up and tell your city attorney and Mr. Pablo that maybe somebody should get the roach. You know what they all did? They all formed a little circle around, then watched it, and then walked away. So you can't keep your own little meeting room clean, you're going to keep tiny homes clean? Look around what's happening to your city. You have projects starting, you can't finish, why jump into another? Don't say the county put this project, the two counties sponsor project. Three of you instigated this project, and you know it, and it's public on social media.
Thank you so very much. The remaining speaker slips will be heard after our agenda items. We will now move on to the consent calendar. Uh, if you have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar minus item one D. Before, uh, we actually go to the voting, we do have one speaker slip for the consent calendar.
Move your homeless and can't wait to bond them.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one speaker slip for the consent calendar. I can't read the name of the speaker slip. It says Blair. There? There? We have a member of the public, Anita.
I've heard a lot, uh, what's going on in Lemon Grove.
And, and I just, sir, I just want to make sure that, um, you're speaking about the consent calendar, correct? Before we proceed, I just want to make sure.
Is that the homeless thing, or what?
No, it's not.
Is that the rest of them on Broadway?
No. Okay. So then what we'll do is we'll add you to the rest of the speaker slips, uh, because there are people who turned their slips a little bit earlier than you. And, um, and then you'll be, uh, able to speak a little bit later on. I'm so sorry for calling you up. Okay, uh, what I will do is I will now, uh, turn it over to our city manager to see if he has any comments regarding some of the items that was talked about during our public comment portion of the meeting.
Absolutely. Just, I just wanted to let Mr. Woods know, and, um, the gentleman's being next to Mr. Woods who lives on Central Avenue. There is an item that staff is already working on to do, to look at traffic control measures. It is going to take us a while, because we do have to do some engineering on those items, going all of the length of Central. So we hope to have that city council sometime in October, June, November, so just look for the agenda.
Uh, thank you so very much. And so now, um, what we will do is we will go to the consent, uh, calendars, minus item one D, see if we have a motion. I'm going to approve the consent calendar minus one D. We have a motion, and the second half will turn it over to our superintendent to call the roll.
Yes, the motion was approved by Councilmember Snow, will be settled by Mayor Lieutenant Mendoza. I will now conduct the vote to go on the record. Councilmember Gascale, absent. Councilmember LeBaron.
Councilmember LeBaron, I just want to remind you folks, please stay so you can say your comments on the record, and my vote is no, I'm not voting yes on the consent calendar.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Lieutenant Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carries on the roll of three, one, one.
Okay, and then our, uh, city manager has a comment to make.
For those members that are here in the audience, the fire chief is going to ask you to make an announcement. Make sure we keep the, um, back doors open, and make sure that we keep the back doors clear. Those are our exits, so please do not block the exits. Thank you very much. I would not, I would rather not have to clear the room, um, so please keep... So please keep those exits clear, thank you.
And then really quickly, I would see Sandra's asthma, again, your speaker's list.
Thank you so very much. Item number two is the public hearing to consider appeal number AA2200008 regarding the planning commission approval of conditional use permit number PDP 220-003 for the proposed development of a 3,481 square foot restaurant, Raising Kings, with indoor and outdoor dining and drive-through window stations on a 1.3 acre site consisting of five parcels located at 759, 7593 Broadway, 75, 76, 7590 Pacific Avenue, and 3342 Buena Vista Avenue. The APNs are 480-081-07 and 09 and 10 and 19 and 21. In the general commercial zone. As far as city clerks, have all the notices required by law have both been given? And I'd like to know if the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents have both been provided?
Madam Mayor, all notices have been provided and all documents, corresponding attachments and exhibits are final with the clerk's office and are included in the terms and agenda meeting.
Thank you so very much. I'll turn it over to our city attorney to ask the council if they have any disclosures of interest related to this particular item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll go one by one, seeking conflicts of interest and export communication. And before I do, I wanna remind the city council that examples of conflicts of interest include financial conflicts of interest, but also if you are biased in favor or against a project or an appeal, you should recuse yourself. And that means that you cannot be impartial in your decision making on any project. So with that, I will begin with Councilmember LeBaron. Do you have any conflicts of interest or export communications that you would like to disclose?
I have no need to disclose.
Thank you.
Councilmember Snow?
As far as export communications, I have the opportunity to speak with one of the residents that lives in these properties. I also have the opportunity to meet with our city manager and our, like the fellows from there and get updated, take a look at the apps and learn more about the projects. I also had the opportunity to speak with the representatives from Raising Kings from the QuikTime Car Wash and also the developer of the sites to give background information that I understand. I have no conflicts of interest, I feel like I can be of help.
Thank you. Mayor Lieutenant Mendoza, any conflicts of interest or export communications to disclose?
No conflicts of interest. I also have a meeting, a long meeting with my fellows to go over the entire project. And thank you for that. And I had a fairly long conversation with the developer of the project.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, any conflicts of interest or export communications to disclose?
I did not have any at this time. However, I do wanna state on the record that I did meet with Michael Fellows and got a full and complete overview of the proposed project. And posed my questions that I had about the project as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to Michael Fellows, our community development manager, to present the staff report.
I've checked. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council. It is a pleasure to present the side of view tonight. With me tonight is Mark Lugar. He's a traffic engineer who reviewed this project on the city's behalf. As mentioned, this item is an appeal of a planning commission decision to approve a planned development permit for Raising Kings, for a Raising Kings restaurant. For this presentation, we're gonna review the history of the project, the location, details of the project, the planning commission decision, the submitted appeal, and provide a staff response to the appeal, and then close with a staff declaration. This planned development permit application, also known as a PDP, was originally submitted on July 13, 2023. It went through the standard submittal review and comment process where the, where the application materials were submitted to the planning department and routed to planning, building, engineering, traffic, and hydrology stormwater reviewers. It went through this process several times until reviewers determined the submittal was ready for planning commission hearing. Planning commission held a hearing on May 28, 2024 and conditionally approved the project. The planning department received an appeal application submitted by Carol Miller on June 10, 2024 that initiated this hearing. The project site is located at the southwest corner of Broadway and Buena Vista Avenue and includes five lots that would be merged into one lot, though 1.13 acres in size. This particular lot would have approximately 170 feet of frontage on Broadway, be about 280 feet deep, through to Pacific Avenue, where it would have about 165 feet of frontage. The project would require removal of all existing buildings and relocation of tenants of two commercial buildings and three residences currently on the project site. The property owner has told staff that tenants have been aware of the eventual redevelopment of the property and is providing them assistance and time for the relocation. Here we have two photos of existing commercial buildings on the site. Here we have two photos of, two of the residents, three residences on the project site. And here we have two photos of the third residence that is a corner park. The left photo is a view from Buena Vista Avenue and the right photo is a view from Pacific Avenue. The project site is currently zoned general commercial and has been designated general commercial as far back as 1983. This zone typically allows for restaurants with drive-through services without need for a public hearing or a discretionary agreement. This planned development permit is only necessary because the property is over acre in size and is zoned for commercial uses. In other words, if the project was below acre in size, this application would not be necessary. Also, the general commercial zone does not allow for single-family residences. The existing houses or groundhouses, also known as legal non-conforming uses, that would not be allowed to be constructed in this zone today. The general plan values designates the property as retail commercial that is intended for retail operations, providing a broad, broad range of goods and services catering to both local and regional customers. This includes shopping centers, grocery stores, and other compatible retail businesses that are auto-oriented. As mentioned, the applicant is proposing to construct a Raising Kings restaurant that would operate from 9:00 AM to 3:30 AM, including indoor and outdoor dining areas and provide drive-through services, as shown on the next slide. The restaurant parking lot would have a two-way driveway for vehicles, vehicle access to and from Broadway and a one-way exit to Pacific Avenue. The parking lot would provide 33 parking spaces with about 235 feet of driveway leading from Broadway to the drive-through way. The drive-through would be accessed from the parking lot, include two ordering lanes with two ordering boards and include a third bypass. The ordering boards would be oriented towards Buena Vista Avenue. The drive-through would provide stacking for approximately 22 people. The applicant would construct a 42-inch-high wall along Pacific Avenue to reduce potential impacts on residences across Pacific Avenue. The site would be illuminated with eight parking lot lights directed downward towards, directed downward to lighting type apartment. The proposed building elevations include a variety of building planes and roof lines with varied, with varied materials and colors. They include three subtle colors, including summit gray, a lighter gray color mountain fog, and a white color hoister shell. The building would also have two brick-like materials, Bel Air Norman Brick Mason Green and coral Alamo white brick accents that would include vintage car hood panel and a powder coated steel matte black canopies that would promote, that would match the proposed bounce bounce and storefront window sashes. There's currently one on the present, on the, on the screen up here.
I'm so sorry, hold on, Michael. I have stated on the record that comments from the audience will not be allowed. If you continue to comment, sir, I will ask you to please proceed with the presentation.
Here, here are colored elevations of the proposed project. The upper elevation would face Broadway, whereas the lower photo would face Buena Vista Avenue. The upper elevation here would face Pacific Avenue and the lower elevation would face the exterior of the parking lot. The project is proposing to landscape 32% of the site. The project was proposed to include 17 shoestring acacia trees at 36-inch box size placed throughout the exterior of the property and in the parking lot. Six thornless, blan, misheep trees, and a 24-inch box sized, 424-inch box western blood trees at the driveway entrance and exits to the property. There would also be a variety of green shrubs, ground covers, varnials, cyclums, and grasses throughout the property, along with fresh ground cover that would wind through the landscape area. The specific trees and plants proposed may change because the planning commission conditioned the project to be planted with native species. The applicant prepared focus studies for traffic, noise, air quality, hydrology, and stormwater. The traffic study determined that the drive-through unit would adequately handle peak demand and that all intersections would operate at an acceptable level of service. Further, the studies determined that the project would exceed acceptable levels of noise per 11G municipal code and air quality impact would be less insignificant. Lastly, runoff would not adversely impact the existing drainage system and the project would comply with stormwater desert management practices. Benefits of the project include that it will add food options to the community. Economically, the project is anticipated to generate sizable sales tax and the project would boost property taxes. Added benefits include that the required public improvements and beautification that would come with the project. Further, the site is well-designed for the proposed use. Planning commission conditionally approved the project with conditions requiring that Pacific Avenue to... Planning commission conditionally approved the project with conditions requiring that Pacific Avenue to remain exit only. Regarding wall finish, use of native plumbing, division of the driveway apron from Broadway, along with standing plumbing and engineering condition. Planning commission was able to make the required findings to approve the project that are shown on the next two slides. These include that the development is not detrimental to a public interest, health, safety, or general welfare. The development complies with applicable provisions of this title and/or deviations that comply with applicable provisions in subsection D. The development is consistent with general plan policies and standards and other applicable plans or policies adopted by the city council. The development density or intensity does not exceed the general plan limitations, existing infrastructure such as utilities, transportation systems, and communication networks adequately serve the development or would be upgraded to efficiently accommodate additional burdens and pressures. Planning commission determined that the project qualifies for the class 32 categorical exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. California Code Regulation Section 15332, because the project meets all the listed requirements shown on the slide, and the project is on an already developed site where no significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality, biology, or water, water quality are anticipated. The planning department received an appeal application of the planning commission approval on June 10, 2024 that asserts the project is not good for the community and immediate neighborhood. Staff's response was that the planning commission held a public hearing and voted to approve the project after they received public comment, reviewed report prepared by staff that included technical studies with traffic, noise, air quality, hydrology, and stormwater that it, that found that anticipated levels, impact levels are acceptable. The planning commission determined that the project met all five required findings necessary to improve the planned development of learning, including finding number one, that the development is not detrimental to public interest, health, safety, or general welfare, and finding number three, that the development is consistent with general plan policies and standards and other applicable plans or policies adopted by city council. Further, the appeal makes no reference to the required findings and has not provided evidence of fact to support the findings to overturn the planning commission decision. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution upholding the planning commission decision to conditionally approve planned development permit number PDP 2200003 for the proposed development of a 3,481 square foot restaurant with indoor and outdoor dining and drive-through window station on a 1.13 acre site consisting of five corridors located in the general commercial zone. This concludes staff's presentation, staff is available for questions.
Thank you so much for providing the presentation. What I will do now is officially open the public hearing and, uh, the official opening of the public hearing. I will call on the assailant, Carol Miller. Uh, Carol Miller, you will have 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Madam Mayor, Council, hello. My name is Carol Miller. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I respectfully come before you on behalf of many Lemon Grove's hardworking employees and families. I have never done anything like this before, so please excuse my errors. Am I a businessperson or a budding politician? I am a former Lemon Grove kindergarten and first grade teacher. There are people with megaphones that are promoting the false narrative that any citizen who does not agree with the race... who does not agree with the Raising Canes project must therefore be against a particular type of business or use. That is a red herring and it's fractured, and I hope that you can see that for what it is. As you are all aware, the project must meet the findings, and that is the focus of this appeal. Raising Canes does not meet the findings. In any discretionary development, the findings, quote, "must be consistent with general plan policies and standards and other applicable plans or policies adopted by the city council" and not be detrimental to, to the public interest, health, safety, or general welfare. This project is not consistent with the following general plan policies and objectives. One, promote a healthy, family-oriented community through appropriate land use and development decisions. General Plan Community Development Policy one point seven. Two, housing to meet the existing and future needs of Lemon Grove residents. General Plan Community Development Objective two point zero. Three, focus new apartment and condominium development in the downtown village next to the Massachusetts Avenue Trolley Station and in other emerging multiple-family areas while stabilizing the established neighborhoods. General Plan Community Development Policy two point two. Four, work towards adequate housing opportunities for special needs groups such as female-headed households, large families, disabled persons, seniors, and low-income households. General Plan Community Development Policy two point five. Five, cultivate small business. General Plan Community Development Policy four point three. Six, promote economic development that positively impacts community health and social justice in addition, in addition to job availability, economic revitalization, and tax revenues. General Plan Community Development Policy four point six. Seven, renewal of Lemon Grove's small-town image and aesthetic qualities. General Plan Community Development Objective five point oh. Eight, promote development that enhances and is compatible with the surrounding communities. General Plan Community Development Policy five point five. Nine, promote land use patterns that encourage the use of trolley and bus service. General Plan Mobility Policy two point three. And ten, locate new noise-generating uses away from sensitive uses such as residences and schools. General Plan Noise Policy four point one. First and foremost, the project removes existing housing and does not replace it with new and or more housing. This area does allow for multifamily housing, not just... Removing existing housing will obviously result in lower overall housing inventory and an increase in rents and home prices. It's pretty simple that when there's not enough supply and there's high demand, that results in high prices and unaffordability. Many, if not all, of the renters currently living on this project site are low and middle income earners and/or on fixed incomes. They are the most vulnerable and will have a higher possibility of joining the ranks of the homeless because of a high cost of housing. We're all aware that San Diego consistently receives dubious recognition for being one of the least affordable regions in the U.S. If you want to help this area become first-place winner and become the least affordable and or push the citizens that are having difficulty making ends meet into potential homelessness, then deny this appeal and choose to reduce the existing housing inventory. When individuals or families can't meet their basic needs, it can quickly snowball downhill, not only for themselves but adding a collective burden on the city and community. Eliminating existing homes and not replacing them makes no sense and is not consistent with the general plan. The general plan identifies the importance and big-picture benefit of a robust trolley system and how trolley stations spur transit-oriented development such as mixed-use projects or pure housing projects. We're already seeing this with several multifamily, mixed-use, and pure residential developments within a mile of the Lemon Grove station, including two projects that are west of and further away from the Lemon Grove station at this project site. Some of you may have been instrumental in making that happen, which is great, and we thank you. If Raising Canes enters into a long-term lease, the opportunity to build much-needed housing on this site would likely be eliminated for thirty years or more. If the property owner sells the property to the Raising Canes, it may be even longer or possibly never. It would be amazing if the property, approximately one acre for Raising Canes and about two acres including car wash, could be used for its highest and best use, which would be for a housing or mixed-use development and be part of the solution to help reduce the housing shortage and affordability crisis in Lemon Grove. This project does not support housing objectives and policies as written in the general plan. In one easy swing of a demolition machine, this project will eliminate the general plan's policy of providing housing opportunities for special needs groups such as, I mentioned earlier, female-headed households, large families, disabled persons, seniors, and low-income households. Almost all of these groups are currently living at the project site. It's quite a statement to the community if council supports the displacement of these special needs groups that are currently living there. Project is not consistent with the general plan. The general plan emphasizes the creation and support of small business. This project, in fact, is killing five longtime family-owned small businesses. It seeks to replace them with two corporate chains that have no longtime family ties to the community. Raising Canes has over seven hundred locations. The corporation's highest priority and mission will be on maximizing profit. Everything else is secondary. Currently, there are successful minority and family-owned businesses operating on the property. Some have been operating for close to twenty years, well before the current property owner started buying up parcels. The businesses provide valuable services to the community, such as the independently-owned and operated pharmacy that services the neighborhood residents, including the clients of the Lemon Grove Family Health Center across the street, or the small-engine lawn mower repair and service shop that provides repair services and products to other small, family-owned service businesses and neighborhood residents. These businesses are already fulfilling a general plan goal to promote economic development that positively impacts community health and social justice. Why would the city replace something that is working and meeting a general plan policy with two corporate operations that will pay minimum wage to most of its employees and which does not support the general plan? The general plan wants to renew and maintain Lemon Grove's small-town image and aesthetic qualities. How does replacing small-town, local, and unique businesses with corporate chain businesses contribute to maintaining its small-town image? It doesn't. The general plan prioritizes land use that encourages the use of the trolley and bus service. It is common knowledge that the more people that have easy access to a trolley and bus station, the more there will be an increase in ridership. And it is common strategy to have multifamily, mixed-use housing in close proximity to a trolley station. So how does a drive-through restaurant, which faces its business model on cars and promoting anything that increases car traffic on our streets, encourage and support the use of the trolley or bus systems? It clearly does not, and it hinders the implementation and vision of the general plan. The general plan emphasizes the need for quieted and peaceful neighborhoods and development that enhances and is compatible with the surrounding communities. The Raising Canes does not promote peace and quiet and is not compatible with adjacent residential. The restaurant requested the ability to remain open until three-thirty a.m. We were unable to find any other restaurants in Lemon Grove that operate until three-thirty a.m. Residents are trying to sleep and do not need to be interrupted by traffic, drive-through speakers, loud conversations in parking lots, parking lot lights, et cetera. I think you all know that many people that patronize a restaurant business in the early morning hours, early in bars, drinking establishments. This project will organically attract and create a hub of loud activity in the early morning hours, which may lead to situations that require the intervention of law enforcement. This is not just about noise, but life safety issues. As a former teacher and a parent, I understand the need for a good night of sleep, for children to be able to learn and function effectively in and out of the classroom. And in your packet, you'll find a memo signed by almost a dozen teachers in Lemon Grove who do not support this project. Speaking of sleep, we adults need our sleep too, and I'm curious if a council person or planning commissioner would be okay with their families living near that late-night operation? I suspect not. Thank you. And I'm sure you have heard from the applicant all the reasons why the corporation has all the answers and their restaurant can help cure Lemon Grove's challenges. Please don't fall for it. They're looking out for number one, and for them, Lemon Grove and its citizens are not number one. They are their own top priority and will say what they need to say to convince you to pass this project. Make no mistake, their main goal will be on maximizing profit. It's interesting that the property owner claimed that both projects need to be approved or neither would be viable. Curiously, that statement makes a person wonder why each project is not then standing independently on its own financial legs. The property owner pushed hard to have the projects reviewed under separate applications, yet wants to then conveniently tie them together and have everyone believe that neither project will work unless they both are approved. Madam Mayor and Council, when each of you were elected, you made a promise to put the interests of the community and citizens first. Not a powerful corporation with high-priced consultants, not a wealthy property owner. When you each look at the, at the project, it clearly is not consistent with the general plan. The general plan is the bible for the community. It is the big-picture vision. Staff, council, and community members came together to create that general plan, and it is the guiding document that sets the directions and values for the community. Very simply, when looking at the Raising Canes project, there are a significant number of general plan objectives and policies, at least ten, that are either not being met or are being eliminated by the project. If you let those objectives and policies be tossed to the trash bin, why have a general plan and community vision at all? Please stand by this general plan that was created by you and the citizens and approve this community appeal. Thank you for your time.
If you can please come back up. The council is going to ask you questions. Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much, and as I mentioned, we will do two rounds of questions from the council members. And so, um, each council member will have the opportunity to ask two questions per round, and so I'll start with council members now. So, thank you for your presentation. You were really good. Let me information, um, can you tell me if you live in proximity to this area?
I do not.
I'm so sorry, Madam, if you could please, I, I do not, um, I own property in Lemon Grove. I'm just, I'm a concerned community. And then, um, I share with you my, the deep concern about the loss of housing.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Thank you for letting me know. Um, I share with you the deep concerns about the loss of housing. Uh, this, these are six households, and it is a deep concern of mine that we are going to eradicate these. Um, the problem that I have, um, as a council member is he owns these properties and he can demolish them anyway. Um, and so, uh, what would you say in response to that? Even if he doesn't agree with these, he could go ahead and demolish them? So what would you say to that?
I would say that, of course, he could. He could do anything with his, with his property, but that's not what's at issue here. This, this proposal is what we're talking about right now, and that's what your attention needs focused on.
Understood, but my biggest concern here is two things, traffic and housing. And so, um, if I can't save this housing anyway, um, and, and I can't get something else in there that, like, what am I doing here to try and save housing? Like, if, if he can do this anyway, why is it only because of Raising Canes that he owns the housing and not just because he wants to polish it?
I'm so sorry. Before you answered that question, please keep the noise down. We cannot hear the appellant, and we need to hear what he has to say. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say, well, maybe he could develop mixed-use housing on there. Maybe he will go a different way and provide more housing. We don't know.
That's perfect. Thank you so much, and, and I would just encourage, um, the developer, please respond to that so that we can hear, um, these ideas. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Uh, thank you so very much, Councilmember LaBarre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Ms. Snorer. Thank you so much for your presentation. It's been very well researched and laid out. You said in your presentation that you are an educator, that you have many years working in Lemon Grove School District, I believe?
Yes, I was, before my kids were born, I was a teacher at Vista La Mesa School and, um, I was a, um, I taught kindergarten and first grade.
Perfect. So from that positionality, as not only a mother, but an educator in this community, Lemon Grove School District, in your professional opinion, how important is it that children of Lemon Grove have access to quality food for their success in school and life in general so that they become productive members of society and the world?
Uh, it's very important, obviously. I mean, that's just a key part. When a child comes to school and they have not been fed adequately or, um, nutritionally, they are not able to learn as well. So it's very, it's a very important part of a family's life.
Have you seen in your experience that when there's a lot of fast food options available to people of a pink-collar community, that that's typically what they gravitate toward because that's all that they have immediate access to?
Um, sure. I mean, I can't cite any studies or anything, but yeah, if that's the food that's available, then that's what we need.
Thank you.
Madam Lieutenant Mendoza?
Uh, I want to thank you also for your, um, presentation. Um, I don't really, I don't have any questions for the appellant, but I do have questions for, questions for staff, and I'd also, I might have some questions for the appellant after I hear the applicant.
Uh, council, um, Madam Lieutenant Mendoza, do you want to ask a question or back now?
Yes.
You may proceed.
Um, I thought that I saw in the report that there would be, um, some street and sidewalk incidents, um, included in this project.
If you can turn on the mics over to the interviews.
That is correct.
Okay. And could you elaborate on that?
Yes. There's areas where there's damaged sidewalks will be repaired. One of the important improvements as far as sidewalks go is that it currently isn't a kind of pedestrian or wheelchair ramp at the corner of Lemon Vista and Broadway. And is part of the one thing that would be done by the applicant, pedestrian ramps would be put in that corner for anyone who is disabled. So, yeah, and then in addition to that, there will be street trees planted around the property. And I believe there's going to be some street repairs associated with that.
I thought that I saw there would be, like, some street improvements on, like, on cats. Is that correct?
I don't have someone available for me to hear. I think we worked on the specifics on the improvements, however, I do believe that is part of the problem.
Okay. And then your mention of this...
Mayor Phil Timmendosa, I want to jump in here. Yes, there will be street improvements. It will come under our public improvement ordinance that we currently have. This project will be subject to that as well as the project will be called.
Okay. And then you mentioned the trees, and I think it's quite impressive that thirty-two percent of the site will be landscape. The current property, look at Ariel, thirty-two percent of the property is not currently landscape. And this project will provide a lot of street, which we don't have right now, and it would definitely be a benefit to the community. I did have a question about the planning commission suggesting native species. I thought the plan for, the plan that was submitted, I looked at the plant, and I, the plants that they are suggesting, and this is something the applicant has expressed, it looked like they were, you know, low, nice, but low maintenance and water-tolerant plants. And I would need to...
Good question to teacher. It's not respect to her.
What's your question?
Ma'am, holding the papers in the back, see your right, to my right, with the gray hair. Please refrain from speaking. Thank you.
So, I'm not sure that I would support the planning commission's condition of approval. I'll have to hear from either councilmembers on that. That, I'm not sure why they're requiring native species. They have an issue with landscape plans.
Thank you so very much. So, as this is an appeal of a decision that's already been made by the planning commission, there were specific findings, and in order to make a decision regarding their findings, I just got to get a clear understanding from you in terms of your findings. And I'll list their findings here, and they're five. One, the development is not detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, or general welfare, and that is the number-one finding for the city commission. The second finding was that the development complies with applicable provisions of the title and/or deviations that comply with the applicable provisions in subsection D, which is deviations. Number three, the development is consistent with the general plan policies and standards and other applicable plans or policies adopted by the city council. Number four, the development density or intensity is not, it does not exceed the general plan limitations. Five, the existing infrastructure such as utilities, transportation systems, and communication networks adequately serve the development or will be upgraded to efficiently accommodate the additional burdens imposed. If those are the findings that were provided for them to go ahead and approve the project, I just want to know how their findings are incorrect from you.
I think I laid out the findings that my team went over and the ways in which the project does not need that. I am not an expert on this, and I can't speak to what they found.
That's all that I have right now. I'm going to go ahead and do the second round of questions, and I'm sorry, the councilmember Snow. And each councilmember will have the opportunity to ask two questions. I'll turn it over to councilmember Snow.
So, at this time, I am, I want to give a presentation from the next one. I'll hold any other questions.
Thank you so very much, Councilmember LeBaron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In case the audience does not know, if you want to leave a public comment in regards to this agenda item, grab a slip and then bring it up to this gentleman here, and then you will be called upon. If you have any comments, questions, or concerns that you want to share regarding this, please, by all means, bring up a slip so you can speak your mind. Secondly, I want to say that I don't have any further questions for the appellant. She's done an excellent job of laying out her case, and I look forward to listening to whoever's here representing these two businesses, the Quick Quack, Car Wash, Raising Cane's, and the property owners.
Thank you. Mayor Phil Timmendosa?
I'll defer any questions after I've...
Thank you so very much. Thank you. We will now hear from the property owner, Ms. Alex Shaw, and applicant Lester Tucker. Your presentation will be fifteen minutes. Thank you.
My name is Alex Shaw, and I'm the representative of the property ownership. I've been working in Lemon Grove for over a decade and committed to the city on this project as well as others in town. We're also working on the right-of property on Broadway in Massachusetts, as well as the Sherwin-Williams property adjacent to retail off of the freeway. In regards to this project, we have worked for years to assemble the project and study different possible uses. We look at every possible use, including multifamily, mixed-use, medical, etc. However, with the cost of construction, size and cost of the land, and interest rates, the projects studied were not viable. When looking at the city of Lemon Grove zoning, our project sits in the general commercial zone as well as in the transition zone along Broadway and across the entire property. We are ecstatic to find two great uses and tenants who are consistent with the city's general plan and were also committed to invest in this community. The Raising Cane's and Quick Quack Car Wash have worked tirelessly with the city to create a site plan that fits the neighborhood extremely well. If you look at the overall layout and positioning of the buildings, they are very well thought out and have mitigated any noise or traffic concerns as shown in our studies, unlike the project considered down the street. The landscaping alone covers over thirty percent of the site. We have created an overall project with two uses that are committed to the city and create synergies in the neighborhood. I'd also like to stress that this is one overall project for multiple reasons. These tenants are committed to each other, and the synergies they create, and the investment of millions of dollars each to the combined project and improvements to the land. The parcels created cut through existing buildings, and we are unable to demo partial buildings. The parcels are specifically tailored to these tenants and the site plans we created over a year. The project only pencils in as viable as one, and we cannot proceed with one without the other. This would have been permitted as one project, and that was what we'd like, what we wished would have happened. However, there's separate conditions and separate construction schedules for each of these I'd like to discuss our existing tenants who are extremely important to us and like family to us, and I know this is one of the biggest issues raised on this project. I think to start, and I'm going to just speak straight out of my head on this part, is you can't make everyone happy. We do what we can. We feel like we want to go above what's law or what code may be written in timing that we need to give these tenants. I know some of our tenants are here today, and I know a lot of people love the existing businesses that are there, and so do we. It's our commitment to try to find the businesses another location on Broadway. I know the brokers who sold me this property, I know the brokers who put Broadway Pharmacy in their location. I know how important that pharmacy is to all the locals and everyone who goes there. It's not me trying to kick them out. That's really not the goal here. We want to find them a home before we ask them to leave and before we put a shovel in the ground. We are committed to assisting them with relocation, each one of them. Many of these existing tenants we already have. One of our tenants who isn't here today, he called me up while I was on the way over here, is now in escrow to purchase a home as a first-time homebuyer. They're set to close in less than ten days. They have three kids, they own two businesses, and we're going to continue to help them through the process as they purchase their first home. Another one of our tenants who's also here now, we're doing our best with our references and resources to try to get him in a larger home. He has a son who's recently moved here and now living with him. Another one of our tenants, actually, our longest-tenured tenant of twenty-one years, we're currently, we think we're hopefully going to get approved with a house for her and her husband who has a pretty bad medical condition, so we're trying to find her a home that doesn't have any stairs. But we are committed to these tenants. We're going to continue to put our time and resources to put these families and businesses in the best possible position going forward. Many of these tenants have voiced their support of us in the project and have written letters of support of us, but we are committed to give them more time than they've asked us. I know legally you only have to give a sixty-day notice. We're prepared to give them six months or more if that's what it takes. We're going to pay for the moving costs. We're going to immediately refund deposits, give fifty days' rent, a payment upfront to help with additional costs for finding a new place, and then we're going to continue to use our resources and references to give them the best possible long-term home. Thank you, and we hope you support the project for the city of Lemon Grove.
Good evening, Mayor, residents, members of the city council. My name is Lester Tucker. I'm here on behalf of Raising Cane's. Our organization is extremely enthusiastic and happy about the opportunity to become a part of the fabric of this community, this kind of community engagement, and this kind of project seamlessly come together with who we are as a business. And I'll share a little bit about that with you folks. I want to take a minute to thank Michael and the city staff. We worked really hard, very collaboratively, not only with ownership but with the city to develop a plan that complies with every ordinance and requirement in terms of code for the Raising Cane's. But that wasn't enough, because this project is literally at the interface of a commercial zone and a residential zone. And so, we took great care and were very thoughtful with the design with Michael's input to enable a site plan that's going to allow the businesses here to thrive, but also limit frustration, which we have these intersections of business and residential. So, we did work really hard to put forth a plan that responds to this adjacency that dramatically improves the street scene and a site that can make all of us proud of being part of Lemon Grove. Just a little background on Raising Cane's. Raising Cane's was started in nineteen ninety-six in Baton Rouge, Louisiana by Todd Graves. It's a great story. I would encourage you all to take a look at our website, learn a little bit about our restaurant, and the things that we stand for as a business, how we interact with our communities. Todd is actively involved still in every restaurant. We have nearly eight hundred in the United States and internationally. I want to make it super clear, this is not a franchise, and that's a good thing. This is a corporate-owned restaurant, which will adhere to strict operational standards. And that has to do with everything with our neighbors. If there's an issue with the city, if there's an issue with our neighbors, do not. And we stand up to it. We're not going to be dealing with a one-off franchisee who doesn't even live on the stage or something. So, if you've ever been to a Raising Cane's, you know we take a tremendous amount of pride in our restaurants, our service, our food, our crew, and we are very involved in our community. If you've been in one, you know that. We're also going to take great pride in our landscaping. The health from Visi-G, hopefully our native pollinator plant, I don't know if Chelsea's here tonight, but you owe me a phone call. We have to collaborate. We had spoken previously to the planning commission, and we look forward to engaging that exact kind of person we engage with our local communities. We make every restaurant the city's own. We implement specific artwork and graphics. We display teams, jerseys, they're all represented. Each of our projects is its own, and to that city. We routinely do great murals and work with local artists in order to bring labor of the city out on our exterior, and we'd be glad to do that here. One of those great examples here in San Diego, you can see in Haiti, both of the Imperial Beach Raising Cane's and awesome mural, local artists. We do actually engage with the local trades, with the local artists. We typically hire between fifty and seventy-five people in restaurant. We have the most robust and genuine community engagement program in the industry. It's appropriately named active community involvement. We don't write a check and say, okay, see you next year. We are engaged, particularly with local organizations, even before our restaurant goings. So, just anecdotally, I'll share with you, we start to hire our crew, we engage with the local organization, we do volunteer work. That's how we build Sweetmore Lottery Company. And it starts on day one. It's part of our team building, part of our community. We're all about helping little leagues, schools, volunteer groups, like Visi-G, but we'll get back to that. Put slide two. Just a little bit about the restaurant here, the technical stuff. Again, it's a hundred percent compliant with all of the current development zoning standards. City required parking is seven stalls. We're providing thirty-three. City requirement for a landscape area is ten percent, and we're providing over thirty-two percent. We have a twenty-two-car queue and two drive-through lanes with an additional third lane for overflow cars and hours, bringing the total to twenty-nine. We have a ten-foot landscape buffer along the Broadway, way to Vista, and actually along Broadway. We have a 10-foot landscape buffer along the Broadway, Wayne of Vista, and actually along Broadway, it's 25. As Alex had mentioned, the site's ideal size and the ideal design could accommodate the most efficient restaurant type that we have. We've been doing this for a long time. We became extremely successful in drive-through operations, particularly during COVID. So this site is actually designed with the top-of-the-line best prototype of Raising Canes. It has the most efficient kitchen, which allows us to be as quick as possible with our service. Next slide. We have a focus menu. I'm not sure if you're aware, but we only have one item that we serve. So we know what you're ordering when you pull in. This is a bottleneck for most every other restaurant. It's the moment at the drive-through. What do you kids want? Do I want a taco? Burger? Not here. At Canes, it's literally how many, not what. And so that allows us to be as efficient as possible. And I'll share a little bit more about the efficiencies with our graphic here. But that really helps us move at the fastest drive-through time, which on average nationally is two and a half minutes from the order board until you're driving out to the fresh hot chicken. Again, the slides are a little bit difficult to see, but so everybody can understand what's on here, I'll just share. It's a 1.3-acre site, highest capacity kitchen that we have in our prototype. They have traffic control, mitigation plan customized for each restaurant. Our operational professionals come, they identify mitigation tactics on-site, when to deploy the heat pad, peak hours, where cones could be set up in an emergency, things of that nature. We currently have 29 cars, as I said. There's 14 cars from the order board in the window. I'll share a comparison in a moment. Okay, let me just share, just go to the in-and-out. Next slide, please. So I did a quick comparison because everybody knows in Lemon Grove, in-and-out is not ideal to get in or out. Our site is over an acre. This is less than half an acre. We're 1.3, 3.49. There's no dual lane. This restaurant was built in 1990. It is not an efficient kitchen. It is not an efficient site. It does not have the kinds of queuing that we have. We literally have three times the amount of queuing in our restaurant in the drive-through lanes without blocking any of the parking. As you know, you can't park it in-and-out because the drive-through lanes are covering up the whole parking from the restaurant. So it is not a comparison. It's not even a post-analog as to what we can expect in our restaurant. And so I would implore you to not make a comparison there about drive-throughs. We are the experts at drive-throughs. I will talk just quickly about our community activity. Literally, we work with over 30,000 local organizations every year. We provide meals. We're not a last resort for kids at school. We're donating meals to schools. We're donating to school, teacher meals for teacher of each year week. Little League is a huge thing for us. We are truly part of the community's fabric and that is not just lip service. If I had more time, I could share. But what I will tell you is that, if I could just finish, please. This location is not an identified housing site in the city's approved housing element. Economic vitality, enhanced development, and the Broadway Retail Commercial Corridor is a general plan and more requirements. Staff, professionals have determined all required planning needs.
Thank you so very much. I enjoy being there, seeing each presenter. We will have questions and we all have a copy of the slide in front of us looking at them. And so there may be questions that come that were not, that were part of your presentation but not shared. So if questions will come forward, you will have that on the screen to share. There were a couple of alphas and I have notated that here. Blue shirt, black hat, right-hand side, but also towards the back. And front, gray shirt, second chair from my left, please refrain from alphas. This is your first warning. If I have to warn you again, I will ask you to be blue. We will proceed with our questions and I'll start with Councilmember Snow. Two questions, we'll do a second round, and then after the second round, we will move forward. But before I do that, I wanna check through real quick.
And then while the mayor's doing that, can I see Crystal Hall regarding your speaker slip?
So after I do the two rounds of questions, I do have a few speaker slips regarding this particular item. I just wanna let you know that you'll be able to speak after we do our two rounds. So we'll start with Councilmember Snow, followed by Councilmember LeBaron.
Thank you so much for the presentations. They were really cool. And so I will start with Nina Sershaw. My biggest concern is housing and I had dreams of being able to put multi-use up throughout this community in that particular corridor. And I wanna hear more about the two villages that you did to outreach to different entities to see whether or not multi-use in particular would be an option for this area. And if you can describe to me in more detail what those efforts were. I know that you indicated that you had met with some people, but if you can really give us some regular data. So I know that you exhausted or that you exhausted every effort to make sure that we couldn't replace this housing and that replacing this housing wasn't an option or even being able to expand the amount of housing in our community.
Yeah, absolutely. I think when we first started on this project in 2015, times were way different back then as well. And I wanna reiterate the fact that we ran these studies over the last 10 years. It wasn't just one time in 2015 and never again. We hired CBRE, I hired, I even spoke with CityMark, they built Celsius and Fahrenheit about our site. I spoke with GrayStar, it was the largest home builder in the country right now, building sites all over San Diego County. So I thought it'd be a perfect option for them. Every single one of them told me, even with the bonus densities that we could try to push for, they're not even in the current zoning, but we did push for them in our, in our plan, told me that we were not even close to being a project that they would consider. If you look at CityMark's projects in the town, they're much, they're much larger sites, much larger sites. They need to be able to get over 200 units. Housing's important too as well. We've looked at housing, we've done housing all over town. And I think the biggest thing here is we're not talking about tearing down homes that were built 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago. These are old homes that, quite frankly, when we came into the project, I don't think have been touched in 20 years. And so to answer your question in regards to trying to build multi-use housing, multi-family here, we looked at that over throughout the tenure period. Construction cost has only gotten up, interest rates have only gotten up. And then when we landed with these, with these great tenants right here, we found a project that was viable. It did pencil out. And what, another thing we've learned in doing retail in other parts of the town, as well as Lemon Grove, we've been doing retail here for a long time, is bringing great tenants like Raising Canes, like, put back to the community will bring other great tenants to the community. It will put Lemon Grove on the map. It took me 10 years to convince a lot of these tenants to come here. And once other tenants start seeing these types of uses coming to the city, it invites more employment. It invites more people to wanna live in Lemon Grove and then it makes larger parcels that pencil out for housing more viable. It's just, this wasn't an option on the side.
I really appreciate the measures of lengths that you went to to be able to smarten this. And also, I'm grateful for hearing about the level of work. Because we have, you know, the Viviana, who she has a great business, she's been here a while, and that she gets to become a homeowner because of this process, and you're a lot. So you're not just relocating people, but actually bringing them into homeownership, which I think is a big deal. We've heard about, I think, for the households, can you tell us the companies that request them? And whether you're willing to make these decisions that you take here today, send them in writing for these, for these tenants?
Yes, we have. And I know, I felt like I spoke more about the residential than I did with the commercial tenants. But yes, we are putting that in writing with our tenants. We are giving them more than enough time. And I even told them I don't wanna put a deadline to it because if it does take a little bit more time to find them a relocation, we will provide them with that time to go find them a relocation. I know even with the Broadway Pharmacy here, hands here, her husband's not here tonight, but he always tells me, like, I wanna be on that same block. And I tell him, I'm like, look, I'll do whatever I can to try to get you on the same block as close as I can. You know, we aren't trying to kick them out. We're trying to relocate them in this situation, whether it does or doesn't still succeed. And I think that answered your question.
Thank you so very much. Councilmember LeBaron?
Thank you, grateful for your presentation. Now, have any questions?
Thank you. Mayor Cortez Mendoza?
So you brought up the 3:30 AM closing time. So I did a little research on that myself and there are actually, I can't remember. But I looked at McDonald's in Lemon Grove, McDonald's, hamburger, Popeyes, Jack in the Box, Burger King. And several that I just mentioned are open 24 hours. I had no idea because I'm, as I mentioned, I go to, I'm in bed by 9:30, 10 o'clock. So I'm not out driving around. I know Popeyes closes at 11, but that's unusual. That's the exception. What I'm wondering is, is it just the drive-through that's open or is the entire rest, I mean, is this for your businesses, is the entire rest, would you clarify that?
Yes, thank you for your question. It varies on what time the dining room will close. Our dining room typically will close prior to the drive-through operation. What that time is, is really market dependent, site activities dependent, security included.
And then the other question, you said something about how, you know, this is our, our general commercial zone in Lemon Grove is actually really small and we struggle with that. That's why we don't have a big tax base in Lemon Grove and our tax revenues are very small. And if you notice, most of our commercial zone right now, and our general plan, we've been doing it for a really long time. But as it stands, that doesn't mean we're gonna take away commercial. We need more commercial in Lemon Grove. But the majority of the commercial zoning does butt up against housing in Lemon Grove because that's just how Lemon Grove was built before we were a city. And Mike mentioned the, this has been a commercial zone since 1983. That's just the oldest map that Mike found that showed this. This has been a general commercial zone long before 1983. I've lived in Lemon Grove, or I've actually lived inside the freeway, at Teal's High School, graduated in 73. I have lived in this area since 1960. And, you know, this, I've been in Lemon Grove, in and out of Lemon Grove all this time. So there really is no way, if we build anywhere in our commercial zone, that we're not somehow running up against residential. So my comment to that is that I appreciate the steps that, I'm just addressing Canes right now. But I appreciate the steps that you want to, to make this as attractive as possible. The landscaping, the residents that are gonna be like houses across the street.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And I'm not sure if staff would respond to my question or if you would respond to my question. But I'm interested in hearing more about traffic efficiency because I've seen a trend when it comes to fast-food restaurants where the traffic flows exceed the available space around the existing business, often flowing out into the streets. So I just want a little bit of clarity regarding your thoughts, ideas, but also plans as it relates maybe to our development policy so that we can get a better understanding.
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. What I would say is there's been a lot of fast-food restaurants over the years developed. Typically, well, I don't wanna date myself, but way back when, you would say, you never wanna go through the drive-through because they always miss something. Since COVID, nobody wants to go inside. Everybody's in the drive-through. And so we have evolved and the analogs that are in the local area, you know, if you take a look at McDonald's, they added a second lane with an additional menu board. That allows the restaurant to be more efficient in food preparation and faster-moving with their lines. Raising Canes is really a huge department focused on operational efficiency. It's not just getting cars through the restaurant. It's also about deliveries, that those can be done, trash can actually be done. Security can be carried out, that security can be effectively managed as well. So what has evolved over the past few years on these more recent drive-through restaurants, you see them at some of the larger chains. You have, you have two lanes with two order boards. You have staff in the parking lot directing traffic, but also taking orders well before the order board. And so that gives the kitchens, which may be outdated and maybe not, more time to prep the food and move the cars through the faster. So the older analogs, and I can share anecdotally with Raising Canes, that came to California eight years ago. They leased a former Burger King. And since that time, they have been acquiring additional land from the neighbors, including Bennys on one side and a car rental place on the other side so that we can continue to build and manage our drive-through queue and keep cars from getting out onto, onto streets when things get back up. So that really is kind of the trend. I can leave it to Michael if he has further comments.
To the efficiencies of the drive-through, I have nothing.
Thank you so very much. I'll do another round of questions, starting with Councilmember Snow. So I'm grateful you had this line of in-and-out because my nightmare is for this intersection to become in-and-out 2.0. So I'm really, really deeply concerned about the traffic also. Buena Vista and Broadway, Buena Vista is where people, that street leads into the freeway. So you have a lot of, not just the traffic, normal traffic, but you have freeway traffic that are in and out of our city. And so I don't wanna be the city council member. When I first moved here-
And so I don't want to be the city council member, when I first moved here and drove fast In-N-Out, I was like, who the heck did that? Like, that, that's crazy. So I don't want to be the city council member that's responsible for that. And so if things get backed up onto this, I know you've done quite a bit to make sure that doesn't happen, but we cannot afford to have that Broadway slow down, especially considering that there's another In-N-Out type of place, not In-N-Out, but ingress and egress through a drive-through with a car wash right next door. So those two have to keep traffic flowing. So tell me what you're going to do if you get cars that are starting to pile up on Broadway?
So on Broadway, if you wanted to maybe flip to our site, I could possibly point that out. Eastbound on Broadway, people are turning left generally to go to the freeway. That is their primary direction. Westbound, they're turning right. So our restaurant does not interfere with that left-hand turn or right-hand turn in either direction. What we also have done is we have mitigated any ingress off of Pacific Avenue into our restaurant. It is an exit only. And so to the extent that cars cannot get stacked in, let's say, so we have 29 cars, if I might, from our pickup window here, I numbered the number of vehicles. There's 22 cars within the drive-through area outside of this drive aisle, to keep this clear. There's another lane that's hard to see here, so these are 1X, 2X, 3X, 4X through 7X. So that's the 29 vehicles onsite in the drive-through lanes. There would be an additional approximately nine cars that could fit here, I mean, that total to 38. And so anytime that we have, well, during peak hours is standard, but also anytime that we have more than three or so cars that are behind the order board, we dispatch crew into the parking lot to start taking mobile orders with their pads. One of the other things we can do is, we actually will shut down the entrance until the vehicles can get out. We will block traffic from coming in, and they can't come in off of Pacific either. This is an only, so we're mitigating traffic. So we have, as I mentioned, each restaurant has a customized traffic mitigation plan that addresses exactly these kinds of conditions. We hire often police officers to direct traffic from time to time. I would never say we won't have an issue, but I will say we have the controls and the processes to minimize at all times any kind of issue. Instead of having a five-minute backup, you might have a first-second backup. Someone spilled their soda, and they're now parked there. But when we do anticipate high volumes, like our grand openings, we do hire often police officers to help. We do a traffic management plan. We typically work with public services and emergency services to implement those. So those are some of the just basic things that we do that we've learned over 790 open restaurants.
Then, one of the issues that the appellant raised was our community plan that really is trying to move away from, or to get into their vehicles, and also the environmental impacts that come with your car sitting there idling while you're waiting in line. So can you address some of those environmental concerns? And then, I would highly recommend, you've got a lot of parking stations there. If you could put in super electric charging stations for people to encourage electric car use in parts of their communities. So that might be something that would help, something that...
I'm sorry, can you just ask the, I'm not sure what the exact question was.
So, can you tell me what some of the, because the appellant raised issues related to, we're trying to get away from having people in our cars, and part of that is because of the environment. Like, that's the reason that we're trying to get people away from using your cars instead of more time in your cars. So what are some things that your company can do to help address those issues? With your audience, with your business problems, based on people waiting in cars. So what can we address environmentally, the issues that she raised?
I think that...
Before you respond, if I can ask everyone in the round to please lower your voices, because we're trying to hear the questions, and we're trying to hear the responses. Thank you. You may proceed.
Ma'am, my mom's partially deaf, so it wasn't offensive, okay?
Ma'am, please follow the directions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. House member Snell, we are meeting or exceeding all the Title 24 requirements, all of the CECL requirements as a people property are already met or exceeded on site. We do include vehicle chargers, and as I'm sure you know, it's a state mandate that no more gas vehicles can be sold in the state of California. So I've talked with a number of cities in California where their climate action plan is kind of counter to what would be supportive of a drive-through. Every year, there's more and more electric cars on the road, so that's a benefit in and of itself. However, in terms of additional mitigation, I certainly am glad to work with staff to try and develop a plan, whether it's electric vehicle chargers or other measures in order to try to further mitigate the potential DHD or other clean air. We're more than happy to participate with staff in trying to focus some kind of condition that would be valuable to the community.
Thank you so very much. Councilmember LeBaron has stepped away. I will now move on to Mayor Portemendozza.
Sorry, I'm looking at my notes real quick. Oh, one other thing I wanted to clarify was the planning commission had also included as a condition of approval, kind of a little median area in the driveway. I mean, can you briefly describe that?
Our civil engineer is here, I think he's going to address that question. No, I can help.
Yeah, because Mike, can you answer that? So this was a staff recommendation, the planning commission, and the project had proposed one wide single driveway, which was, which for pedestrians is a little more concerning to navigate. So staff recommended that that driveway be broken up with a kind of islander between the entry and exits to the parking lot in order to provide pedestrians who may have a difficulty walking, for example, to have a spot where they can stop in that driveway and then continue walking rather than having to traverse a long driveway entrance.
And then, when you have...
I would say, from a traffic mitigation standpoint, you incorporate what we in the industry call a pork chop. It would have been the driveway, it looks like a pork chop that you raised. It does tend to slow traffic coming in to the restaurant. And so that right lane may have to slow down a lot more, or a lot earlier in order to begin versus cross. There's pros and cons to that. We're glad to take staff's recommendation, but I didn't, I think it would be helpful to identify that as, as traffic is obviously something that may be important.
Slowing traffic down on Broadway is not a problem, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Councilmember LeBaron has now returned to the platform. Do you have questions? You have two.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, and I do not have any additional questions at this time. So what I'll do is I will move forward to our public comments. And so if there is anyone here who wishes to speak on this particular item, what you can do is submit a speaker slip to our city clerk. And I do have some speakers who are here already. I'll start to call. Our speaker is Joe Heels, followed by Glenn, Glenn Artesma. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounced the name.
Good to meet you. I'm a mayor, councilman, and I'd like to speak. I just wanted to put on the record to clarify what you said about other fast food drive-through restaurants. Yes, after I googled a little bit like you did, Mayor Portemendozza, there are some 24-hour drive-through restaurants in Lemon Grove, but they are located away from residential.
There's only one of them.
And that was in the Albertson Center, or in the further downwind of the freeway. So having an operation very, very optimal 3:30 in the morning every day of the week seems kind of not very good for the residents. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, you know, I think the property owner, you want me to know, one business, you know, all the other business, they all start coming. We all know what brings vibrancy to the city. It's good schools, it's safe streets, it's parks, it's good amenities. That's what brings people to move here, and it's why your residents come here. Business is followed, it's not the other way. I think that's just common knowledge. One other thing I wanted to mention is, completely understand the property owner, the customer, I'm very admirable, business is good. There's a lot of discussion in the weeds about this specific project. But as a discretionary item, council has an obligation to see if it fits within the bigger picture general plan. So before getting into down in the weeds, shouldn't the question be, because Ms. Mueller talked about, you know, is this, does it fit in with the general plan? Does it fit in with the goals? Because what I hear people saying is that, ah, I don't want this lot to happen. It's not really what I would like to have happen, but I don't want it to happen, so I'm going to settle. So if council wants to settle, they're going to make a decision that's going to affect the community for a long time. Raising Canes goes in, and they're not going to be gone, they're there for 20, 30, 40 years. So that's a, I would ask you all think about the decision. It's an important decision, not just about the drive-through, it's about what you want for this community. Is it all in the general plan, the goals of the general plan, and the desires of the community? Period. Let's not talk about pork chop, the drive-through, you know, the landscape, it's all important. But at the end of the day, is there a...
Thank you so much. Next we have, as a reminder, demonstrations, including clapping, is not allowed. We really need to hear from the speakers. I will call up Glenn Ches- Ches- Chesva, followed, Sesna, followed by Roger Villa. Glenn, are you here? Or could it be go on? Okay, we will move on to the next speaker, which is Roger Villa. One second, sir, one second. Okay, sir, if you could just hold for one moment. If you could hold one second, sir, because it is Gloria Sisena. Sisena. So it's Gloria Sisena, and then, sir, I will call on you next. Okay?
Mayor and Councilwoman Maria Gloria Sisena. And I am directly affected by the Raising Canes restaurant, as my property is right, right behind it, where they're going to build it. My, I have lived there with my family 65 years. The present owner, I understand, seven of the properties that have to, that he's sold out to Canes and what's... It used to be the Bell Sisters. They own three properties, or four properties, but I guess about three more. However, I do have concerns, and my main concerns is, well, basically, by the way, nothing against them, they are a good restaurant. And the comment that was made earlier about, do you, I mean, you want your children to have good food. But we all know the best food is from home, so that's my, my impression of them. But I do have concerns about the four-foot walls that's going to be on Pacific Avenue. And if it, if the wall is salted, the material it's going to be made of will be graffiti patches every now and then, that you see these graffiti patches when it paint over. That wouldn't be a good sight for me, because that's what I look at, my front garden. Or you have some kind of anti-graffiti paint that you can put on, like the murals underneath the 94 freeway. They haven't been touched with graffiti, so I know there is that. The other thing is, the sidewalks, they're all painted as well, because they're doing markings. I understand they're going to do some fiber, because they are working, homing. I spoke to some people, all the wires underground now. So on Pacific Avenue at Buena Vista, there is two stop signs. In the morning, when I head out my kitchen window, I look out, and for many years now, you have a backup of traffic. The two stop signs are on Pacific Avenue. Maybe a four-way stop sign would help, because they zoom by there. On several occasions, the stoplights on Buena Vista have not worked, which causes an enormous amount of backup, especially in the morning hours, I'm up at 6:00. So people try to move. What's that going to bring on, since they're open at 9:00, the Canes? The other thing is, the palm trees. The, when the Bell Sisters, there used to be three palm trees. It might be, there's still one left, or two. They might be historical, so I'm sure you've looked into that. Because as you know, historical cannot be moved, or you need to... The unusual, the other thing that I have concerns of, the noise factor, the pollution from the cars idling. It was a good thing that you brought up the electrical, putting in electrical, because that's the way of the future. Future, that changes future. And so the thing is that the smell, when I, when I go on the 94 eastbound and I pass Massachusetts, the In-N-Out burgers, you can't help but smell the burgers and fries and all that. What about the smell from paint? Now, do you understand you have an order, or orders to prevent that?
Thank you so very much, ma'am.
And security's the last thing.
Next, we have Roger Villa, followed by Kathleen Brothers. And I apologize in advance if I said your name wrong.
Thank you. Say my name, Roger. I live at 7545, directly in West Canes. I lived here on Main Street, I'm still chairs for 25 years. And I remember the bakery, and then we'd go pick up the trash, and, you know, a little bit of noise. I wanted to ask you, some of the neighbors that I can see across from me, they have, I believe, two of those... they have, I believe, two of those houses at, uh, wheelchair. I don't know these people, but, you know, I heard that this business is supposed to bring people, and it doesn't make sense if you're removing people for this business. I don't know much about business, but nothing, except maybe the planting of those trees, that's what, that's the only good thing I see. I wish you would consider building, I don't know, affordable housing, something else. We got Popeyes, KFC, oil grill. I, I don't know much about business, but all these people are here. I guess you could say it against Mr. Shaw, Mr. Fellows. It's, I believe they're here for the money. Really care about money. Please, work for the people and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Kathleen Brothers. Oh, hi there. If you can grab your mic and talk into the mic so that everyone can hear what you're sharing. Thank you.
Hi, yes, last name Stratton. I'm here trying to save Broadway Pharmacy. I have been on to it for seniors for over 20 years for medical reasons. I have referred many of the, I have referred many of my people to Broadway Pharmacy. They speak different languages. They've got great assets, so Lemon Grove, Spring Valley, and back in the mesa. They're the only pharmacy that will deliver medicines to the patients, like someone serious with cancer, seniors that can't drive or didn't want to go get it. So I think they're a great asset that they should stay. One thing I'd like to point out, too, that they deal a lot with the homeless. And the pharmacist, she makes sure they understand, she's polite to them, she treats them like people. And they know they can depend on her to help them or to answer, or to explain. Two things I'd like to point out. They had, like, said that they were ready to hire law enforcement to do the traffic. Anyone that's prepared to hire law enforcement to control traffic, they already know there's going to be a traffic problem. The other thing is, Mr. Shaw earlier told me that he promised all businesses that they would find him a place, even six months or longer. But yet, when he was talking to you, he said, "I will try." There's a difference between "I will try" and "I will do." And I want to point those out. That, basically, I think Broadway Pharmacy is a great asset, everyone knows where. Even the homeless know, they can come in and get help, which is important. But if the homeless don't get their medicine, we're talking real serious problems, as you all know. You know, if they're meant to stuff. That's all. But thank you for letting me talk. And I think it's real important to keep up with the work we do for the community. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. There.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have nothing against the chicken place or the car wash. Although we have four car washes in town already.
Yep.
And the chicken place, they just can't compete because my wife can't. That being said, the impact the chicken and the car wash will have will be tremendous. See, and how, we got Home Depot right across the road. Home Depot has put a tremendous amount of traffic on Broadway and for service streets all around. Putting this restaurant and car wash right across the street now is just taking. The, the testimony of the guy from the chicken place said that they're very efficient at getting customers in and out. That's, that's one of the main reasons right there, you know, that there's going to be a problem, because in order to put more traffic on Broadway, and if he expels them out to Pacific, then it puts all that problem on the resident ones that are left on Pacific. Not fair. It's just, it's just not the right fit for Lemon Grove. We've got other issues that are much more pressing, and I think we need to address first. In-N-Out Burger is a perfect example of, of no traffic control. They already assume that they can just use up one lane of, of traffic for their order line. Unacceptable. It's just not the right fit for Lemon Grove. People come to Lemon Grove to, to be in a family organization, you know, to where we've got families' farms and gardens and all kinds of stuff, and it's just not the right fit. And I've been living here for over 65 years.
Thank you so very much. As a reminder, please not clapping. Next we have Sheila, I think it's Jacob.
Yes.
Yes? Followed by Anita.
So I came here tonight for another issue, but I used to live on Pacific Avenue in two different locations. The traffic there is atrocious. It was atrocious when I lived there, and I moved out in 2007. When I'm looking at this, it looks like there's only available interest on New York Road, Eastbound on Broadway, which means you'll have to do a U-turn at the Home Depot. How will that affect that traffic avenue? I know when I have to get in turnwinds in my room, I never have a title. This is the morning, top professor. I'm worried about the traffic on Buena Vista. Buena Vista is a main flow of traffic to get to other areas within Grove.
If you could please speak into the.
Oh, sorry. Buena Vista is a main point of traffic to get through to other areas of Lemon Grove, and people use it as a highway. I can tell you since COVID started, or ended, people have forgotten how to drive. I'm a special driver partner, I have my second job. A stop sign doesn't mean stop anymore. When I'm looking at the general information on this location, I'm seeing maybe five car lengths at that stop sign. People will be backed up, which means there's going to be more traffic diverted to New Jersey. And again, New Jersey has a straight shot out of the Home Depot. This is going to be affecting many people's lives on Pacific Avenue. I also just looked up, I just became aware of this tonight, I was looking for other issues that are not on the agenda. Check.com says 274 people go through a drive-through for Cane's, on average. That means there will be 274 more people on Pacific Avenue. These are people's homes. The people that go through that drive-through, they're not going to care that people live on Pacific Avenue. I know this history is that I have worked on also, in addition to Pacific Avenue. People don't care that you are making a turn left or right. They try to go around you and almost cause accidents. This is an unsafe location for a Cane's Chicken. And with regards to hiring patrolmen, sheriffs, often police officers to control it, I have never seen that happen in Santee. And that location backed up for over a year down to the Sheriff's Department. And there was no sheriffs, to the best of my knowledge, ever working that were any uniformed police officers. Please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Anita, followed by, last name is Hall. I can't tell if this is Crystal Hall, or.
Yes.
Crystal, okay. Followed by Crystal Hall. Who's being on the mic? So I'm just speaking.
First of all, most of the points I was going to bring up have been made, but I don't live in that area, but I would not want to live on Pacific in a residential area that has a five-foot coming through, or go down Broadway and have it backed up, because they do get backed up. People don't move like this, and, and cars get backed up. To say that we can't compare it, or we shouldn't compare it, the In-N-Out, that's what we have to compare it to, because that is such a piasco there, between the In-N-Out and Starbucks. It's horrible. And if you want that all to down, I mean, it's like going to, you know, feel again, and all you have is that school restaurant all the way down. And Buena Vista is a through street, like Mr. said, that goes to freeway. On ramp right there, the freeway. That road is horrible anyway, there's no sidewalks. How far is this sidewalk, just in front of the restaurant? Are they going to do that whole street there and make it safe for the kids that have to walk through those holes with all these cars? Can we move out and drive it? I mean, this is just not a, not a great area. And honestly, how many chicken restaurants can we leave in this town? All right, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next we have just a moment, followed by Jacob. And with Crystal, followed by Jacob. After Jacob, this will complete our public comment portion of this agenda item. It will be closed.
Hi, City Council members. Hi, friends of Lemon Grove. It's really great to see everybody out here today. Like, this is great civic engagement, and I hope that more people show up to the.
If you could please suggest a.
Yeah, City Council, like, meeting. However, I'm wondering if all of you could help us solve the mini-debate of this Raising Cane's and the fact question, which is, is this area, according to our general plan, is it retail, commercial, or is it mixed use? Because when I look at the map and I see the red zone there that says that it's retail, commercial, I hear other people, so everyone who is like, you know, like our city planning commission, the, the real estate developers who have come up here and that do this as a profession, they all say it's retail, commercial. However, you know, comments online, or like, if you could just settle the basic debate for all of us, is it mixed use? Because I, it doesn't show that on our city plan. So I would just love an answer to that, because, you know, we all kind of need to know if that's what this is zoned for, so that we know, you know, what's the plan. I'm a huge proponent for businesses. I'm, I'm so excited about the revitalization that I know Lemon Grove can have. We need the tax dollars, and we need these things for businesses that will come in, that can give us the tax money that we need in order to fund other things, and revitalize Broadway, and do all the things that we need, but we can't get there if this city plan that has been here for years and years and years is never going to come to fruition, because people are confused about what the use is. So if we could just, you know, all agree, is this mixed use? Is this retail, commercial? Would somebody who wants to put residential properties in that area need to file for a permit to change that zoning in order to put, you know, housing there? I know that we need housing, and especially for Lemon Grove, and especially for our senior community. It's something that I hope that you, as the City Council, will welcome into our community in the areas that where residential is supposed to be. But I think there's a lot of confusion about zoning, and what that really means, and like, is it mixed use, is it commercial? That's, that's all I'd really like to know. And thank you.
Thank you very much. And then our final speaker is Jacob.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things. So I looked on a map, within one mile of this proposed location, there are 21, 25 businesses that identify as fast food. If you, if you Google match it, it has 25 results. Benefit of the doubt, probably a dozen of them are visiting fast food, like McDonald's, Burger King, et cetera. Not to mention, I believe, two of those are chicken specific, they have steam hotlines. And there is a Raising Cane's five miles from there, where I have access to one. I just don't believe this area is a good fit for, really worth working on. But I can consider that as well. Just going to speak of similar businesses.
Thank you so very much. And so now we will give the applicant, Lester Tucker, five minutes to, for a rebuttal.
Madam Mayor, if I may, before we get to rebuttal testimony, just for the record, we did receive, City Clerk's office did receive public comment for this item. That public comment can be found as soon as you enter the media center and onto your right-hand side.
Thank you so much. And before I actually segue to Lester Tucker, because I believe along the way with public comment, there were some questions and comments, and maybe some clarification that's necessary. I'm going to pass this over to staff to pretty much answer those questions and provide the clarification. I don't want to get too far away from that, and then I will move on to Lester Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a delay, activating. Some of the items that were brought up during the public comment, there was a concern about the planning commission added a condition of approval number seven, that the rest of the property shall be finished to match the restaurant and utilize empty graffiti already. So that, that is a requirement for the project. There was a concern mentioned about the existing palm tree on, on the property, that that palm tree would be removed as part of this project. There's concerns about noise. The applicant did program noise study, because it does anticipate the project meeting city requirements for noise. And concern about smells, that's one that I may need to the applicant, because they have some systems in place to help mitigate smells that was brought up at the planning commission meeting. There was the question about the zoning. So, so the city of Lemon Grove, there's two maps. There's the land use plan, which is under the general plan, there's the zoning map. General plan is kind of the big picture, you know, the zoning map has just got, the land use, land use map. Now, the zoning map, uses that are permitted in the zone are based on, primarily on this. And so when you go to the Lemon Grove Municipal Code, there's a chapter under general commercial, and this, the permitted uses, and this is available on our website. And one of the permitted uses is a restaurant with a drive-through. And so typically, this type of drive-through would only require a building permit. No public hearings required, city staff unable to add conditions of approval, planning commission able to add conditions of approval, including there's no ceding requirements under the municipal apartments for drive-throughs. And if this would trigger a discretionary review for this project, the fact that the project is over an acre in size, and they, it's in commercial terms. So if the applicant uses the size of this property below an acre, it's no longer discretionary, this can just be built with a building permit, without us, without any ability for us to come to add conditions of approval to the project. So in that, in that list of uses, permitted uses, mixed use is a lot of the general. So that, that is a permitted use of the zone. The developments that are in the zone aren't necessarily currently designed to, to maybe support mixed use, in that the maximum height of the general commercial zone is 30 feet. And when you look at the construction and everything else, that's about two stories you could build up. There's some exceptions and everything else where you might be able to do a third story, but it really limits the ability to develop the site as a use. In addition to that, there, there's all the other zoning standards that a mixed-use development would have to comply with in this. That includes landscaping requirements, open space requirements, parking requirements, et cetera. That typically downtown areas, like downtown those specific, with reductions would make easier to build. So that, that's some of the challenges currently with the general commercial zone and developing mixed use, even though it is a permitted use of the zone. I, it may be, you know, I'd have to go back to, I didn't have it last year. I think it's a conditionally, I recall. I think it's a conditionally requirement that requires a public, so hopefully, yes, you can do mixed use in the general commercial zone. However, fast food restaurants actually allow it. And, and one thing I do want to point out too is that there has to be a transition point for the zone. There's, there is going to be a point where commercial, but residential development. At some point, the zoning is going to, is going to change. And so, so every city has that. There's also a point that you're going to have multi-family adjacent to single-family zone. Typically, that multi-family, that's more impacts than the single-family. So, so, so zoning frequently has these transition points where unfortunately, the lower intensive use generally towards impacts. I've lived in that sort of area. And, and so I hope that answers some of the questions that got brought up.
Mr. Bellows, could you have Mr. Huar address the traffic and the traffic studies that were done, that were brought up, please?
So the, the comment brought up regarding the additional traffic or U-turns that are going to be generated. Yes, that's true. As for the projects on Broadway, they're limited to right turns only. So yeah, you'll see additional U-turns to be the eastbound, westbound U-turn at the point of this, that Broadway signal. Obviously, additional U-turns westbound, eastbound.
And please have a stick into the mic so that everyone can hear you.
Yes, so the, with the additional U-turns at both Broadway and New Jersey, Broadway, Buena Vista. There's, there's going to be additional trips, but you know, if, but the storage there could be able to accommodate additional traffic. Not, the signal timing could be adjusted to, to a period.
Thank you so very much. Okay, and so now we will hear from the applicant. He will have five minutes, five minutes to speak, followed by the appellant. And the appellant will have five minutes to speak. So Lester Tucker, you may approach the podium. And please speak directly into the mic.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And thank you for all the civic engagement with all of the people that have come chose to spend this evening talking to you about share the city of Lemon Grove as best possible can be from a lot of different perspectives. I want to introduce myself to our neighbor, Gloria. Here's my card. More than happy to talk with you at any time about anything that you need in terms of anti-graffiti, in terms of the wall, in terms of the noise. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought she was the voicemail. I'm sorry. Mrs. Sencita?
Isenya.
Isenya. Isenya, I'll talk to you after. We are active with our neighbors. We engage with our neighbors routinely. I talk with staff extensively about engaging with our neighbors here, and I look forward to doing it in the future. In terms, in terms of the noise, we do have noise study. We have a lot of restaurants that are openly in these transition zones. We, we modify our site plans to be as respectful as possible to those zones. We moved our building all the way towards Broadway. We directed our speakers away from the residential zone. We also have ambient noise-adjusted automatic drive-through speakers, not the old It's a very good system. We use camera systems. Not a lot of noise coming from our restaurants. We turn down music at a certain hour to respect neighbors. We also have smell scrubbers or odor scrubbers within the restaurant to keep the smells from the restaurant from emanating out. Contrary to In-N-Out, In-N-Out has that as a marketing point because everybody here has smelled In-N-Out and goes, hmm. Sounds like a good idea. I would just, I can reiterate that you have a professional staff here who has gone to great lengths and determined the technical aspects of this in terms of CEQA and the city findings. Everybody wants what they want. That's not always how real estate and development works. There's a lot of courses at play that bring development forward. So I would encourage you and urge you to please rely on the professionals that have determined that our project is compliant and appropriate. With sincerity, humility, and confidence, I offer that this is the right project in the right location, with the right design, for all the right reasons. Whether it's economic development, whether it's revitalization, whether it's bringing a great civic partner to the city of Lemon Grove, I urge you to reaffirm our approval and deny this appeal. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you so very much. And next, we have Errol Miller.
Hi. So Mike, I just wanted to clarify, make it very clear that this, that these parcels are zoned for multifamily residential up to 30 feet without any extra talk about it. It is zoned that way. That's what I heard you say.
Give us a second to kick in. No, it's, it's
It's a yes or no question. Is it in there or not?
It's not because the zoning is general commercial. And
So maybe I used the wrong term.
And, and, and multifamily, per the zoning ordinance, multifamily is not permitted in the zone standalone as a use. Mixed use may be permitted in the zone. Correct.
Mixed use. Right. So mixed use is allowed and that includes multifamily residential. Right on that?
It, it does, it may include multifamily. Doesn't mean to be
Exactly. But it can. It may. All right. So just in response to what the community member said, I wanted that to be very clear. So I guess, you know, you heard from the professionals and the professionals are great and I'm very glad that we have them, we need them. And they're paid. They are paid to say what they need to say. And I'm not saying that they, just keep that in mind. They are paid professionals. They are going to do what they need to do to get this project passed. Otherwise, I just would support what we heard from the community members and ask you to please consider what you heard, what they said, and weigh the ways in which it does not mean this project, does not meet the vision of the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And so now I just want to check with staff to see if they have any further comments provide clarification regarding this particular project. And so I'll check with Michael Bellows as well as our city manager.
Nothing additional, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so very much. And so now I will ask our city council members if they have questions. There'll be two questions for a council member. I will do two rounds. And I'll start with council members now.
One of the, this might be for a traffic person. I'm really concerned about the additional traffic on Pacific. We heard some good comments. Mrs. Sencita offered that one solution would be to include four-way stop signs on Pacific. Did help reduce some of the traffic. These are, these are, my husband was T-boned at Broadway and Buena Vista. These are known issues and traffic issues even before we put in another business over here. And so what can we do to include mitigation options, traffic calming measures to make sure that this doesn't add to the existing problem that we have? For the traffic study, do you look at Palm Pacific, the impact of traffic on Pacific?
Mr. Huar, would you please respond? Thank you.
Yes, so regarding stop signs, potential stop signs on Pacific and Buena Vista, the city has a policy, always stop policy, but that would have to be evaluated. But as it relates to traffic flow and the signal, eventually, queues to give it backup, A or B. Signal potentially install clear sign it up. But you could potentially install clear hit markings if the intersection is always stopped. Based on the, you know, always stop to evaluate.
The, the part of that question was, can you tell me what kind of traffic impact, the traffic study looked at on Pacific?
Oh, so the study intersections were Pacific, Buena Vista, Broadway and Buena Vista. Operation analysis is still operating. Except the whole services turned to peak hours. That's with existing both projects.
Thanks so much, now. I, I'm getting a signal from the applicant to see if he has any further question, further responses to the traffic study and what you looked at. You wasn't welcome to come here and talk about the traffic issues that we're studying. And when they do a traffic study, they look at level of service, so how efficiently the cars get through the intersection. And those are rated A, B, C, D, E, F. And when you get to a level F or beyond, then you have to do a bunch of traffic mitigation measures. As Mr. Huar was saying, the traffic, the traffic study shows that the level of service can handle it and it doesn't change adequate for what this particular business will bring in according to the study. Please address who you are and then let the council know and then answer the question that we
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Sherbert Briggs. With Kinley Hart Associates and prepare the traffic study. With regards to the analysis, the traffic analysis that was done on Pacific as, for clarification, there was an analysis done on Pacific, or sorry, Pacific Avenue at Broadway as well as, sorry, on Buena Vista, at Pacific, Pacific Avenue and Broadway. And based on the analysis, it's a two-way stop control intersection. And the way that is evaluated is that it's for those that need to stop, which would be the ones that have to stop on Pacific to take onto Broadway, right, onto Buena Vista. So based on the analysis, it operates acceptable level of service. Meaning there's not enough gaps, there's not enough volumes on Buena Vista in order to, that the traffic on Pacific could make a left turn to an acceptable delay. If there was unacceptable delay, that's when we look into two-way stop, or always stop control intersections. But because it does operate acceptably, no recommended improvements were provided at that intersection.
How about the impact on Pacific? I think that's what she asked you.
Uh, thank you so very much.
Not the intersection, the actual street.
Just a follow-up question. So how many additional cars would this put on Pacific?
In, in the traffic analysis, we did assume 40% leaving through Pacific. There were exit, again, it is exit only on the Pacific driveway. We did assume 40% leaving through Pacific and that'd be about 32 cars.
And how many, 32 cars at a time or 32 cars in a 24-hour time span?
32 cars around the PMP tower.
Thank you so very much. And there's two questions for council members. So I'll look at and move on to council members there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that we have the opportunity to ask some questions because all the council members know asking her question that now makes us all wiser to the fact that there's going to be during peak hours. So that's a very short period of time. That's the time when people are eating or say it's five to six thirty, or six thirty to seven. Anyhow, it's a, it's a short amount of time. There's going to be, according to the study, there's going to be about 32 cars exiting or 40% of the people who are visiting Raising Cane's are going to be exiting onto Pacific Street. And I just want to point out to all of you here, Pacific Street is currently one of the worst paved roads in our city.
Yep, I live there.
It's in a atrocious condition. And this project is proposing to put traffic to the amount quantified by the Raising Cane's people. There's going to be about 32 in a very short amount of time. So that's, there's going to be more traffic, more cars than just 32. And they're going to be put onto a road that is in currently distress. So I just want to point that all out to us. We're going to take a road that is like a back road and we're going to turn it into like a high-traffic road and it's in complete disrepair. Want that out?
Members and council members, just to clarify, that earlier this year when you approved the 25 road segments for to be repaved, especially those streets that are under 25 PCI, that segment of Pacific was on the list to get redone. There's also going to be some public improvements that the developer will be paying to help aim those roads above on Pacific, Buena Vista, and on Broadway. So we are taking care of making sure that that particular road is brought up to current standards.
If we're looking at history, we can note that that's not going to actually be done in timely fashion because none of the roads that are on our payment and complaint have actually been addressed in a timely fashion.
You let everybody else talk.
And before we move on to Mayor Potem Mendoza, I will make it very clear that if you open up your mic and speak when it is not your turn to speak, I will ask the city clerk to cut your mic. I'll turn it off over to Mayor Potem Mendoza.
Just looking at my customer questions, I think that they've all been us staff. So I have your question.
Thank you so very much. And I do not have any further questions at this time. But I will do one more round of questions. Each person, each council member will have two questions. And then after that, I will look for a motion to close the public hearing. And I'll start with council members now. This one's for Mr. Shaw.
Hi, thank you so much. We're kind of, Ms. Roden had pointed out when we were up here talking that you indicated you would try to help relocate them and she wanted a stronger, we will do commitment. What can you do to demonstrate your commitment to helping, especially in particular, she was deserving of Broadway pharmacy.
Yeah, we will. I'll say we will.
I'll say we will. Uh, we're, we're gonna find them a new place. And I hope to find something that they love. I don't wanna just put them somewhere where they don't want to. That's why I'm not putting a time limit on it. And we've been saying six months, if it takes a little longer, it takes a little longer. But I'm trying to find something that works.
And you had indicated that you had letters and support from the tenants. Did you bring those?
I sent them in, you know, in.
Thank you so much. And Mayor Portemendoza, she stepped away from the platform forum, but mentioned that she did not have any further questions at this time. Uh, there is one item on the list that I have here. Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Uh, Councilmember LeBaron, two questions please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Snow pointed out to me just a minute ago that actually the first go-around, I only asked one question and it was my opportunity at the dais to speak when you very rudely interrupted me. That said, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna...
At this time, if I did skip you, then you can have three questions.
Why interrupt?
You may proceed.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. At this time, I just wanted to say something to the record that I'm pretty sure the audience is thinking. And that's that you lead these meetings like a complete fool. Hence, no one respects you. That's it.
True.
If you cannot, silence yourself, I will clear the room. We're trying to get through the city business. Thank you. As I mentioned, Mayor Portemendoza said that Rachel's on her way back to her seat, but she does not have any additional questions. And on my list here, there was one comment that came board and it revolved around pollution and pollution control. And so I just wanna hear from the applicant or staff about the measures that are in place regarding pollution and pollution control.
I do have the long straw. Thank you for your question, Mayor Vazquez. What I would like to align on is that California Building Code has a very detailed, specific, broad requirements as it relates to greenhouse gas, California Green Code at twenty-four. So naturally, we are complying with all the requirements as set forth through the building code as it relates to environmental pollution. In addition to that, there is a lot of demolition that's going to be happening should you find the project go forward. And inclusive of that is environmental remediation, which hasn't been brought up, but which will occur, cleaning up this site from a whole gas station use and historical TPH that had been left in the ground there. So there is a benefit environmentally to this, this site. More specifically, in terms of pollution control, I will venture a guess that you're also talking about the smells that could emanate from the restaurant. And I'm not an engineer, but I do know that we take that consideration very seriously. Not just near residential use, residential, but of near any other use. We do have what's called odor scrubbers within the restaurant. As you can imagine, we're in inline stores. We're in all types of environments where there's a lot of uses in a lot of restaurants and a lot of people around and having all those smells go out is not pleasant. So we will restrict the smells from our restaurant such that our neighbors are not bothered by it. I'm not sure if there's more I can answer for you, but I'm glad to try.
Uh, yeah, it, um, when, when I say pollution control, there are, there are two parts to it. One, it's the smells and the scrubbing of the smells. And then two, I've heard some comments regarding vehicles idling or waiting, you know, production of pollution in that manner. And how could that be controlled? And that's my take on some of the comments that were shared by people who turned in speaker slips. And I just wanted to try and make sure that there was a response to their concerns if possible.
Yeah, I can, I can add a little bit to that here. So the, the, there's no measures that are being taken regarding the emissions from vehicles. However, the applicant did submit an air quality greenhouse gas emissions study. And that study concluded that the air quality G H impact from the proposed project would not exceed San Diego pollution control district thresholds. And, and so ultimately, within the region's thresholds for, for greenhouse gas emission.
Uh, thank you so very much. And, and those are my two questions. And so, uh, thank you. There is one more step that we will venture forward with and that is a closing of the public hearing. And then there's an opportunity for us to have deliberations. And so I do, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
I motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion, do we have a second? Uh, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
The motion was made by Councilmember LeBaron with a second by Mayor Portemendoza. I will now conduct the vote to go on the record. Councilmember Gascoy. Councilmember LeBaron.
Councilmember LeBaron, let's keep in mind that there are people here who didn't get to leave their general public comment and they are waiting to leave that. We want all of us to consider that because it's very late in the evening and people are here to share a public comment that typically is sent at the very beginning of this meeting. And my vote will be yes to post this portion.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Portemendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carries and a vote of four zero one.
Thank you. And now we will have council deliberations. I'll start with councilmembers now. So first, I wanna thank everybody who came out. I really appreciate the amount of public interest, the thoughts that went into it at the time that was spent. We have some really good comments from the community that really can help impact the way that we move forward. So I really appreciate that and I know that none of you want to spend your opportunity on this. So, uh, thank you for being here and preparing. Um, I also wanted to thank the appellant, who's extremely well-prepared and came in with a lot for us to think about. And, and I also wanted to stress to my colleagues, I think it is time for us to really take a look. Some of the comments were about the number and amount of fast food restaurants. And I'm sure we'll hear something similar along those lines. And like you're about the number of car washes we have in town. Some of the things that we did with the massage parlors, I think it can really take a measured look at how many of these types of businesses and what we want for our community and really figure that out. So then we don't have people investing money every day into these projects. Um, with that said, my, my primary concern going into this was number one, the amount of traffic involved. Number two, the destruction of housing, already since here. I currently have to report the housing. It's been here for a long time. The rent's expensive. And so I am, I was deeply concerned with the amount of that. I'm, I am impressed that I, I rent a house in my legal clinic, it's my day job. I don't often meet people who are property owners who do so much to make sure that the small businesses that were in these commercial units will continue to be on Broadway and will preserve the small businesses that, that where they wanna be and help facilitate that process. And there are not many developers who would help people buy their first house and help these people be able to relocate and give them a time and let that full, gather the money together to be able to do that. I desperately want to be able to put multi or mixed use into these communities. We are gonna need to work with all of the new people that are coming into our Broadway corridor in order to make that a reality. We have Kelvin right now is an example of what it could look like in our downtown area. I, I think the majority of the community agrees that we want a small-town feel, but we need housing and we, we don't want dense housing in our, like, we want our dense housing to be well-planned. And we wanna put it where it makes logical sense that will have the least amount of impact and that will encourage the time of car usage that be brought up. I have a lot to think about because I'm in the Housing Rights Legal Clinic and this is the destruction housing. Like, this is a really hard decision for me. And I also have to look at, at the laws as they exist now. And so as frustrating as that is for me, I've had to go through and see if they could checkmark off each of the different things that the appellant raised. She did a really good job of bringing here a thorough list of the potential impact points between what our general plan is and what these businesses will bring to the community. I, I believe that they've adequately addressed the issues of traffic, sound, smell, and that they've been able to check those off. I'm encouraged that they are, that they built such a big site and that they're using so much land for this because it will help the flow of the traffic there as much as possible. I, I want, I want a business, I want a city where businesses can thrive. I am, I'm excited that Raising Cains and other big chains are looking at us. I still want us to be the small-town feel, but for us to grow, those are some of the growing pains that come with moving forward as a city. Um, the, no, no. Biggest concern left that I had was really the housing. And that's, it's gonna continue to be a concern for me. I'm still thinking about it and still going it out in my mind. But as I, I, my concern is that they could just abolish it anyway. And I'm sorry, this is a really big decision and I'm not gonna rush it. It's... So, anyway, thank you for, thank you really for your patience and I'm...
Councilmember LeBaron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's very clear where our community stands with this. And the point of these meetings for our people is that they come and they share how they feel so that they can lobby their elected officials or persuade their elected officials to how they feel. Now, my job right now is to try to persuade you folks as my colleagues to lend a certain ear. That said, it's important, there's, there's stories and there's narratives that are told from the dais in efforts to persuade the public, persuade city staff, persuade voters. So I wanna address one narrative because I need to set the record straight. Councilmember Snow mentions one specific person who will be displaced if council votes yes to move forward with the Raising Cains. I've spoken to that person and her husband. Her husband, in fact, has spoken to the media. So as evidence, we can refer to that Fox Five, Channel Ten, BBC news clip in which he's outspoken in saying that he is very upset that this is happening. So regardless of whatever paper that his landlord was able to coerce him to sign, he's on the record as saying that he's upset by this. And to be clear, because this is all about persuading, right? We deliberate so that we can explain ourselves to our constituents and try to convince one another of certain things. To be clear, that couple was forced to move. And out of fear, and only out of fear, they were forced to come up with the money to get into a huge financial responsibility and to buy a home, even in spite of the current state of the economy in which it's not necessarily the best time for people to buy a house given that, that interest rates are exorbitantly high. Had this not happened to them, that couple could have waited until financial terms were more in favor for them. But they're now being forced into a position of having to pull the trigger and make a call that's going to have huge impacts on their life for a very, very long time. So let's be clear about how this is affecting these people versus trying to spin a rosy narrative that isn't true. We have a community in crisis and they're crying out to us for leadership. That's what we've seen here tonight amongst other times. All we give them, all we give our people are lies and chicken shacks. At the same time, city leadership is eager to break ground for yet another corporate fast food joint, our kids are amongst the most obese in the county. They have no functioning rec center. You know, rec centers that have things like flag football, softball, dancing, basketball, soccer, things that contribute to them having a well, balanced and healthy life. Our senior center is closed. Our seniors used to look forward to the camaraderie that they shared with other people when they went. They looked forward to the healthy meals and the healthy, active living classes and programming that were offered at our senior center. We have little to no real quality of life and worthwhile things for our children, seniors, or anyone else for that matter, to enjoy. Yet city leadership pedals fast food to our people and though that, as though that is going to enrich our lives and add value to the city, we're smarter than that. We may be blue collar, but we're smarter than that. You know what brings value to a city? A rec center with programming brings value. A senior center brings value. A safe downtown corridor brings value. How about things like parades and fireworks? Parades and fireworks shows, those little things that make life worthwhile. How about high-quality education centers? Support for the local economy and small businesses. And let's point this one out because this too brings value. Safe and paved roads, properly paved roads. We have none of that. And it's a shame that we as leaders can't budget for the important things, the real things that matter to the people of the city. Rather, the council majority budgets to feed the hands that pay for their political campaigns, such as special interests, wealthy landowners, corporations, some of them which are represented here tonight, both and all who have absolutely no problem donating to anyone's campaigns or to the city when city staff goes around knocking. As the appellant pointed out, the general plan is the Bible. You all should know that. It most certainly is. There are at least ten general plan objectives that are being broken by the proposal to demolish small business and family homes to construct Raising Cains. This project seeks to remove houses. The area allows for multifamily housing. This eliminates existing homes, which is inconsistent with the general plan. The highest use for this area would be housing or mixed-use housing. This project does not support or encourage the use of nearby public transportation, something that all of you have professed to really care about. They're talking points for your political parties. They're talking points for you when you're running for office. Yet we're faced with a project that threatens that. and there's nothing but support. I'm confused. The public's confused. They know you're hypocrisy. The general plan professes to encourage walking, biking, and use of public transportation. Well, this project is inconsistent with that. This project does not promote economic development that promotes social justice. Also, another talking point come election time. You know when you peddle to black and brown people? Talking about social justice, stacking us up, thinking we're too dumb to know what actually adds value to our lives? A chicken shack is going to add value to my life as a Hispanic? Yeah. In fact, this project, it closes a lawnmower business owned by a Mexican immigrant from the state of Guadalajara. And it also seeks to threaten the viability of a pharmacy owner, a pharmacy, rather, owned by an Asian immigrant. This project is not compatible with the surrounding area as they've ordered tons of homes and construction would choose, sorry, would cause an unfair burden of traffic, noise, vehicle pollution, and congestion to an entire community. Now, is that fair? Does that add value to people's lives? Having cars idling day and night in front of their homes? So, then their kids can have asthma? So, then their kid's only option or access to food is another fast-food restaurant? Again, the project doesn't support the general plan's objectives to cultivate small business. For all these reasons and more, this project is detrimental to public safety, health. I repeat, health and welfare of our people. Is this the best that we can do? Not a rec center for our kids, but a fast-food chain? Is this what our people deserve? Their homes destroyed and lifelong dreams of having their own small business crushed? Over and over, the people are witnessing, all of you, sell them out. You sell them out in more ways than one and for more projects than one. There's people here who are waiting well past nine-thirty, and they're probably going to wait till the very end so that they can also tell you how they feel that you sold them out in offering up our city for something that they don't agree with. The sleeping cabs for the homeless. They're going to wait. They're going to be here, and you're going to hear them. The people want leaders for positive change. You all have a chance right now to do right by the community. I encourage you. I'm trying to persuade you to please take it. Be a hero. Be a hero. You can be a hero. This whole room will cheer for you folks. Be a hero instead of another politician with no guts and deaf ears.
I'm just going to start out by saying that I'm reminded that several months ago, Councilmember Snow and I tried at this very dais to help some very low-income trailer home residents from being evicted here in Lemon Grove. And I just, I'm reminded that Councilmember LeBaron, she periodically let us know, "This is America. We can't tell a property owner what to do." Yet, here she is. So, I'm looking at some of the problems. Let me talk about the cons. The cons of... One of the cons is the neighbors on, the neighbors that are living on Pacific right now. Most of these are single-family residents. But their property isn't zoned for single-family residents either. They're zoned for, a developer could come in and buy their property and build apartment buildings. That's how we do zoning. You have your commercial zone, and then you have like a buffer after that before you get to single-family homes. So, but that is one of the cons, is that neighborhood has not changed in the over forty-some years that we've been a city. Another con, and you know, I can't, you know, do we need more chicken? Do we need more fast food? I, you know, Councilmember Snow and Councilmember Gastel, they're both vegetarians. They're not pushing this because they're going to, they want more chicken, or they're not pushing this at all, but I mean, they, you know, I eat all organic food. I never eat fast food. As my branch...
What I will do is, if, um, Mayor Protemendoza, staff, elected leaders, and the general public, we really want to get through this agenda item because we actually have one more after this. This is not the only one. And I know that there are folks who want to speak about an item that is not on the agenda tonight, and I want to make sure that your time is not wasted and that you are heard. But we have to respect each other and show the court. I want Mayor Protemendoza to finish her comments. She deserves to be heard, just like everyone else, and you deserve to be heard too. So, let's work together to get through this agenda item so that we can get to the next one and move on. I'm going to turn this over to Councilwoman Protemendoza. Please do not interrupt her and let her have her opportunity to share her thoughts and her ideas regarding this particular project. Thank you.
For eight years, I sat on a committee here in Lemon Grove that was funded by Kaiser to bring healthy eating options to Lemon Grove. The one thing I learned is we can't be the food police. People are going to eat what they're going to eat. We have lots of healthy options in Lemon Grove. There's a Sprouts right across the street. I don't have to leave Lemon Grove to get organic food. But people, you know, you can make a choice. You can absolutely make a choice. There are good, healthy restaurants to eat at at Lemon Grove, and I frequent them often. So, bringing another fast-food restaurant is not... I'm not in favor of another fast-food restaurant, but I can't tell a developer what they can and cannot build at Lemon Grove. Do we need another drive-through? I'm a big proponent of our climate action plan. Yet, we are moving towards all electors. That kind of takes the handout of that argument. And I am concerned about the rental of housing and businesses. But this happens in our commercial zones. These areas are zoned commercial. And yes, for years, they were residential. But once this, and this was way before our time, once they were zoned commercial, housing is no longer a single-family... If a single-family home gets torn down, you can't put another single-family home down. As far as bringing in mixed-use developments, I totally believe that this is not easy to do, especially in this particular area where we can't, we're not, a developer can't go up here. Right now, if we wanted to get housing in Lemon Grove, we need, like, the Kelvin development. We need, or the developer wants to build higher-rise buildings than is permitted in this area. That's why this developer had a very hard time finding mixed-use development. And yes, that's what we all want. We all would love to have the mixed-use. Unfortunately, another thing I've observed is that we require mixed-use in commercial areas, but those storefronts are sitting empty. And so, you know, we need some teeth to that. So, now I'm going to go to the pros. This site is bringing, is going to be like thirty-two percent landscape. The buildings are attractive. If you look at other fast-food restaurants in Lemon Grove and elsewhere, their grounds are always well-kept, unlike a lot of homes and businesses in Lemon Grove. This is going to improve the attractiveness of this area. Lemon Grove desperately needs more commercial development. This is going to increase our tax revenue. I mean, it also makes me very sad that our top tax revenue producers in Lemon Grove are our fast-food restaurants. In addition to, like, a first home, who do you go? It's zoned commercial already, and it's bringing jobs into Lemon Grove. So, those are really all the comments that I have.
Thank you so very much. And with this particular agenda item, it's an appeal. And it's an appeal based on a decision that was already made by a governing body that was appointed by this city council. There were residents who filled out applications and made a commitment to the city to review projects as they move forward according to the guidelines that are set by the city. And with this appeal, it truly is our responsibility to find a space or place where the findings by the planning commission were inaccurate. And while we may feel a certain way about a fast-food restaurant or we may feel a certain way about housing, at the end of the day, it is our responsibility to look at the findings that were outlined by the planning commission and to find whether or not there are discrepancies. I'll have to be honest with you here. When I look at the findings, and there are five, number one is the development is not detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, or general welfare. And your planning commissioners, they found that this project fits within that guideline. Your planning commissioners, they found that the development complies with provisions and deviations that comply with the provisions in subsection D. They found that. They found that the development is consistent with the general plan policies and standards and other plans or policies adopted by the city council. And policies are the law. Your planning commissioners found that the development density or intensity does not exceed the general plan limitations, and that's after a very thorough review. And they also found that the existing infrastructure, such as utility transportation systems and communication networks, adequately serve the development and that they would be upgraded efficiently to accommodate any additional burdens imposed. Those were the five findings, and that is where our conversation needs to be. Are these findings accurate? And after much discussion and questions, I cannot see or find a space or place where these findings are inaccurate. While we may feel a certain way about chicken and we may feel a certain way about fast-food restaurants, we can't make, and we can't make decisions based on feelings. We have to make decisions based on facts. And based on the facts that are here, it makes it very difficult to not support the decisions that were made by the planning commission. And so, that's all that I have to say. I appreciate Mayor Protemendoza for pointing out that thirty-two percent of this project is going to include landscaping. And the one important thing that I know in terms of our environmental efforts is that when more trees are planted, it helps to reduce our temperature here within our city. And so, that's an added bonus, and it supports our efforts to be a true free city. So, but those are my comments here. It makes it really hard because we all have feelings. But we, sitting here, you have to look at the laws that are in place and certain diligence in analyzing a project based on the law and the policies that are established for this city. So, those are my comments regarding this particular project. I want to, you know, go ahead and see for this particular agenda item, do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt a resolution upholding the planning commission decision to conditionally approve development permit number PDP 2200003 for the proposed development of a three thousand four hundred and eighty-one square foot restaurant, Raising Cane's, with indoor and outdoor dining and drive-through window stations on a one-point-one-three acre site consisting of five parcels located at seven-five-five-nine and seven-five-nine-three Broadway, seven-five-seven-six and seven-five-nine-zero Pacific Avenue, and three-three-four-two Reyna Vista Avenue in the general commercial zone.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. I will ask our city clerk to call the roll.
The motion was made by Mayor Protemendoza with a second by Councilmember Snow to approve staff's recommendation. I will not conduct the roll. Go on the record. Councilmember Gastel absent. Councilmember Snow. So that the business owner could just abolish these houses or anything. So, I'm going to go.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Thank you, Joel. I'm in favor of the people's will, so I uphold the appeal and I vote against the Raising Cane's.
I vote no, too.
Mayor Protemendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of three.
Thank you so very much, and I will say, so before we move on to item number three, thank you, everyone, for, you know, holding it there. thank you, everyone, for, you know, holding in there with us as we get the business of the city done. And this is a business meeting. We have item number three, which is a public hearing to consider appeal number AA-two-dash-two-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-nine I am going to ask everyone to please lower your voices. We're trying to get the business of the city done. And if you cannot, I would recommend that you exit because we're trying to get the business done. Item number...
You've already made up your mind.
Yeah, pretty much.
You know, you already made up your mind. You're so involved before all of this with Raising Cane, too.
Yeah, we see it every time.
I will ask the individual in the orange flower shirt, to please, it's red flower shirt, to please be quiet. I will ask the woman in the blue jean jacket sitting in the second row to please be quiet. If you do not, I will ask our sheriffs to squirt you out.
They won't need to work you down.
We will move to item number three, which is a public hearing to consider appeal number AA-two-dash-two-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-nine regarding the planning commission's appeal of conditional use permit number PDP-dash-two-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-five. I'm going to stop right now. We're going to take a break because we have a council member who was on social media right now talking. And so, we're going to allow her the opportunity to talk on social media. We'll take a five-minute break. Thank you.
They could have said, they didn't need to invite them without talking to us.
It is. This is true. But at this point, we're hitting the top.
Well, why did Spring Valley, why was Spring Valley's voice is not heard and not a city?
I didn't think about it, something like that.
That's what's above.
I didn't really think about it, something like that. But it happened like that, but it'll make one of my size, so I just have...
I know, right? Good afternoon.
See you later.
Bring a bullet ticket to say they were in support of it. So it was Rachel Vasquez, Mendoza, talked privately. She meant that a lot. And then, so it makes it look like everybody wants to win reality.
Well, let me do this for her.
I know. Sorry.
We're all no time off, we're preparing. Except for us, right? The working people, the working people, we don't get paid any here, right? I don't, that's for sure. But I get all, you know, I get paid. I've been working for the morning, I'm a single mom, my husband passed. And they all get breaks and they all get paid and they don't vote the way we want them to go. They don't listen to our voices. I've been out since five-thirty, I'm a single mom, my husband passed. I have to raise my daughter and have to be here. You get paid to listen to me, not and to us, not to vote the way you guys want. No votes, everybody else. I didn't vote for you and I thank God because I knew you were going to do this. I knew it. So tell them the five minutes is up because I'll be quiet.
We will now start the city council meeting. And so, we'll...
She voted out the Latinos and everybody.
Please silence your voices so that you can keep your tune along with the agenda. We will now withdraw the meeting with item number three, which is a public hearing to consider appeal number AA-two-dash-two-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-nine regarding the planning commission approval of conditional use permit number PDP-dash-two-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-five for the proposed development of a three thousand five hundred and ninety-six square-foot car wash, quick rack, with nine back stations and two canons on a one-point-one acre site consisting of five parcels located at seven-five-five-three, seven-five-five-nine Broadway and seven-five-four-six, seven-five-five-eight, seven-five-six-four, Pacific Avenue. And the ACN are four-eight-zero-dash-zero-eight-one-dash-one-one, one-two, one-three, one-nine, and two-zero in the general commercial zone. City clerk, have all the notices required by law? Have those notices been given? And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents? Have those been provided?
Madam mayor, all notices as required by law have been provided and our documents attached with correspondence, corresponding exhibits are filed at the city clerk's office and our faculty tonight's published here in the agenda.
Thank you so very much. I will turn it over now to our city attorney to ask council if they have any disclosures or conflicts of interest related to this particular item.
Thank you, Madam mayor. I'll just go one by one through the city council, seeking if there are any disclosures regarding conflicts of interest or exportate communications that need to be disclosed. By way of a reminder, an example of a conflict of interest would be a financial conflict of interest or a bias either in favor or opposed to a project in a manner that would not allow you to make your decision in an impartial manner. So I'll start with council member Laverne. Council member Laverne, do you have any conflicts of interest or exportate communications that need to be disclosed at this time?
I have nothing to disclose. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Snow, do you have any conflicts of interest or exportate communications that need to be disclosed at this time?
So I don't have any conflicts of interest. And just to be clear, like, whenever we do public service, we have to report exactly who we get money from. And we have to turn those reports into the FPPC and Central Clerk. And we have to report every single penny that we get. I have been compliant with that. You can go and you will be able to see exactly who's owing us money. You will be able to see that. Other people, honest diets, have not filled out those. That's where your question should lie. We have an obligation to report out any potential conflicts of interest and you should be able to verify that information. I am an open book. I would give you my bank account. It's a sad thing to see, but you can see it. I haven't, I'm hiding nothing, I do nothing. And so, the claims that there is somebody on here on the tape is absolutely false and you can verify it for yourselves. So I do not have a conflict of interest. I'm not biased. As far as exportate communications, I did my homework before I got to this event. So I was able to talk to our planner, Michael Fellows. I spoke with our city manager. I also reached out to the developer. I also reached out to the owner of Quick Crack, or the representative, Quick Crack, I cannot say that, Quick Crack Car Wash. And so, I was able to get more information before I came here because we're only allowed two questions each. And this way, I'm able to get the information that I need to be able to make a good, solid decision in here. I am ready to listen to everybody and I'm, and these are important decisions. And there is legal liability when we don't report bias. When we go out and go onto Facebook and make decisions and put all the information out there and make our decisions before we get to this bias.
Like you did.
You could see it was difficult for me to make this decision. Other people didn't do that and expose us to liability. And so, please be careful when you're here and you're not disclosing bias before you get here. You're supposed to come in and give everybody the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. Mayor Portemendoza, any conflicts of interest or exportate communications that we need to disclose?
No conflicts of interest. And also, I did my due diligence by speaking with Mr. Fellows and with the developer.
Thank you. Mayor Vasquez, any conflicts of interest or exportate communications?
I did not have any conflicts of interest and I did speak with Michael Fellows regarding the project, asked questions, and he provided me with answers regarding the project. And that's it. Thank you very much. We can proceed.
Thank you so very much. And so, I will now open the appeal hearing and I'll turn this over to Michael Fellows, our community development manager, to present the staff report.
Counsel? As mentioned, this item is an appeal of the planning commission's decision to approve a land development permit for a Quick Crack car wash. This land development permit application was originally submitted on October ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Similar to the previous project, it went through the standard submittal, review, comment process until reviewers determined the submittal was ready for a planning commission hearing. Planning commission held a hearing on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four and conditionally approved the project. The planning department received an appeal application submitted by Carol Miller on June tenth, two thousand twenty-four that initiated this hearing. This project site is located directly west and adjacent to the previous Raising Cane's project that's outlined on the screen in red. The project includes five parcels similar to Raising Cane's. The project includes five parcels that would be merged into one, to one-point-zero-one acres in size. This L-shaped lot would have approximately a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage on Broadway, be two-hundred-and-eighty feet deep through to Pacific Avenue where it would have about a hundred and eighty feet of frontage, eight-hundred-and-eighty-five feet of frontage. The project would also require removal of all existing buildings and relocation of tenants of two commercial buildings and three residences. The property owner is the same as the Raising Cane's project who told staff that tenants affected by this project also have been aware of the eventual redevelopment of the property and is providing them with assistance in time for the relocation. Here we have two photos of the existing commercial buildings as viewed from Broadway. The property for the building on the right would be split between Raising Cane's and Quick Crack, which is why it is shown twice and mentioned in each of the projects. This slide shows photos from Pacific Avenue of a vacant lot being used for storage and one of the three existing residences on properties where the car wash is located. The photo to the left is from Pacific Avenue and shows a property where the, shows, uh... The photo to the left is from Pacific Avenue and shows a property where the two existing, there are two existing residences. The photo to the right shows a two-square residence that is not part of the project. It is a residence that would neighbor the car wash. Similar to the other project site, this site is also zoned general commercial and has been so accordingly for decades. This zone typically allows for a car wash with a minor use permit that is a staff-level discretionary permit appealable to the planning commission. In this case, the land development permit is required because the property is nature and size. Also, as mentioned in the previous application, the zone does not allow for single-family residences. The existing houses on the property are grandfather-legal, non-conforming, abusive and would not be allowed to be constructed in this zone today. The general plan land use plan designates the property as retail commercial that is intended for retail operations providing a broad range of goods and services catering to both local and regional customers. This includes shopping centers, grocery stores, and other compatible retail businesses that are auto-reused. As mentioned, the applicant is proposing to... As mentioned, the applicant is proposing to construct a Quick Rack car wash. The car wash would include a 3,500 square foot building that would house the equipment, a 240 square foot office building, two metal canopies, and nine vacuum stations. The car wash proposes operate from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The car wash parking lot would have a two-way driveway for vehicle access to and from Broadway only. There would be no access to or from Pacific Avenue as proposed by the previous project. The parking lot would provide 12 parking spaces with about 270 feet of driveway meeting from Broadway to the drive-through lane. The site line currently shows three lanes. However, planning commission approved the project with two lanes. That will be discussed further on the next slide. There are two residents on a property located to the west of the project site. One residence that is two-story tall is only seven feet away from the shared property line with the car wash. And the other two, the other residences locate 19 feet away. Staff recommended planning commission adopt a condition based on the proximity of these residences that reduce the car wash to two lanes instead of three lanes that had been proposed and is shown here. The landscape buffer would be expanded by about 15 feet to provide a total separation of about 32 feet from the residences to the key vehicles. This condition allows for staff to acquire a third aisle to be opened if traffic queuing issues are observed with the project. The applicant would also construct a minimum six-foot-tall wall and plant trees tall enough to obscure lighting to the two-story residence. Further, the applicant would construct a 42-inch-high wall along Pacific Avenue to reduce potential impacts on the residences across on Pacific Avenue. The building elevations propose a simple, mostly rectangular-shaped building with a variety of flat roof lines. There is a tower element facing Broadway that provides architectural variation. The east and west side elevations propose full windows. The the building materials include three types of concrete blocks, including smooth home-faced light gray concrete-based near unit, or known as CMU, a split-faced dark gray CMU, and a precision-faced dark gray CMU. There would be yellow decisive, there would be a yellow decisive yellow arch, yellow decisive colored yellow arch in front of the building and on the side columns. The upper part of the building would be white stucco snowbound color with green Quick Rack accents on the roof of the building. Here are colored elevations of the proposed structure. Lower elevation would face Broadway, whereas the upper elevation would face the interior of the car wash. The upper elevation here would face the properties proposed for Raising Cane's, and the lower elevation would face Pacific Avenue. The landscape plan proposes that nearly 30% of the site be landscaped and include five brown-trunk height eight-foot California cantons along Broadway, three coastal live oak trees at a 15-gallon bucket size located in property corners on Pacific Avenue, and one along the west property line. It also proposed eight western red bud trees at a 24-inch box size placed along the interior of property lines, and three Brisbane box trees at 15-gallon, and three Chinese lean trees at 15-gallon size. Also included were screening, shrugs, brown-covered perennials, succulents, and grasses throughout the property. Planning commission required that the landscape plan be revised to remove all palm trees, require native plantings, plant trees no smaller than 20-foot box-sized trees, and that the revised landscape plan be consistent with the Raising Cane's revised landscape plan. The applicant prepared focus studies for traffic, noise, hydrology, and stormwater. The traffic study determined that the drive-through would have less than significant impacts and did not recommend off-site traffic inclusion. The noise and impact study anticipated that car wash noise would not exceed limits established by the London Wells Municipal Plan. The hydrology study was determined to meet hydraulic requirements, and stormwater was not found and stormwater was found to be compliant with the city's best management practices. Benefits of the project include that it will add a vehicle cleaning option to the community. Economically, the project is anticipated to boost property taxes. Added benefits include the required public improvements and amen and landscape beautification. Further, the site is well-designed for the proposed use. Planning commission approved the project with conditions requiring that the developer build a perimeter wall treated with anti-graffiti coating along property lines shared with Pacific Avenue and construct the wall separating the residences to the west. And further added conditions that limited the hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Plus, planning commission added the previously mentioned queuing lane reductions and landscape modifications to it. Planning commission was able to make required findings to approve the project that are shown on the next two slides. These include that development is not detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, or general welfare. The development complies with applicable provisions of this title and/or deviations that comply with the applicable provisions of in subsection D deviation. The development is consistent with the general plan, with general plan policies and standards and other applicable plans or policies adopted by city council. The development density or intensity does not exceed general plan limitations. Existing infrastructure such as utilities, transportation systems, and communication networks adequately serve the development will be upgraded to efficiently accommodate the additional burdens imposed. The project was determined to qualify for the Class 32 categorical exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act sequel guidelines. California Code Regulation Section 15332 because the project meets all the listed requirements shown on this slide, and the project is on an already developed site with no significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality, biology, or water quality are anticipated. The planning department received an appeal of the planning commission approval on June 10, 2024. It was also submitted by Carol Miller. The appeal asserts that the appellant does not think the project is good for the neighborhood and community. Staff's response is that the planning commission held a public hearing, received public comment, reviewed report prepared by staff, and attached technical studies for traffic, noise, hydrology, and stormwater that anticipate acceptable levels of impacts concluded to approve the project. The planning commission determined that the project, all prior required findings for a land development permit, including finding number one, that the development is not detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, or general welfare, and finding number three, that the development is consistent with the general plan policies and standards and other applicable plans or policies adopted by the city council. Further, the appeal makes no reference to the findings and does not provide evidence of fact to support the findings to overturn planning commission's approval. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution upholding planning commission's decision to conditionally approve land development permit number PDB 220-0005 subject to the conditions of approval for the proposed development of a 3,596 square foot car wash, quick rack, with nine vacuum stations and two canopies on a 1.01 acre site consisting of five parcels located at 7553, 7559 Broadway, and 7546, 7558, 7546 Pacific Avenue. APNs 480-081, 111, 12, 13, 19, and 20 in the general commercial zone. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you so very much. I call on the appellant, Carol Miller, to come up and speak. You will have 15 minutes to introduce your testimony. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, counsel, thank you again for allowing me to speak hanging in there this entire evening. I am obviously disappointed in the results of the previous appeal. I know there are many members of the community who feel the same way. I honestly think the decision will set back the forward momentum and progress of new housing that we witnessed over the last several years. The Quick Rack project also is not consistent with the general plan. For now, I will not list those same ten inconsistencies because we just reviewed them. I'm going to move on and save us a little time and speak to additional reasons why the Quick Rack car wash should not move forward. First, the project also is not consistent with this portion of the general plan. Promotion of economic development that promotes tax revenues, the Community Development Policy 4.6. We know that the city is struggling financially, and I think we know that the car wash, I think you all know, that the car wash does not contribute any sales tax revenue to the city. It will in fact eliminate five local businesses that are actively contributing sales tax revenue and replace them with a business that will not contribute at all. Does that make financial common sense for the community? It does not. Second, there are several flaws with the noise study provided by the applicant to the city. The proposed Raising Cane's location was shown on the southwest corner of Broadway and Buena Vista. The car wash is to be located west of the southwest corner. An accurate and truthful noise study would be based on the actual location of car wash operation. Instead of providing a noise study to staff and planning commission based on the proposed car wash location, the applicant provided a noise study based upon the proposed location for Raising Cane's, which is about 200 feet east, which is about two-thirds of a football field, and therefore further away from the existing residential homes that will in fact be immediately adjacent to the proposed car wash. The report makes it appear that there will be no negative impact on the residents. The submittal of a noise study that is based off of the wrong location makes the noise report void, and the project should be immediately denied. I have a copy of the relevant portion of the noise report that was provided for the planning commission hearing. And I don't know if any of you would like a copy. I have copies that I can give you. There is another misleading item in the noise report. The applicant provides a specification sheet from the car wash vacuum vendor showing the motor turbine decibel readings that will emanate from the equipment. It states on the spec sheet that their ratings, that their readings are taken outside of the equipment enclosure, which is constructed of cinder block, concrete slab, and wood joist roof. The equipment is actually housed in a portion of their building that has significant openings, which allows the sound to freely escape. The decibel readings provided by the vacuum vendor are not applicable and should not be used, and the noise report is therefore not valid. It's concerning that a second noise study was then provided in your initial council package, including alterations to the sound map and other portions of the report. Applicant then, at the very close of business yesterday, provided a third noise study that again had different information. I don't understand why they would need to keep changing the noise study. Nothing with the project has changed, so why has that been so hard to figure out? The information that you receive and review should be the exact same information that planning commission receives and reviews, that's what they base their decision on. I would ask counsel, is it even legal for the planning commission and counsel to receive different documents? In addition, is giving those, it was about 500 pages of new documents at the 11th hour for a council appeal hearing, giving appropriate time for counsel or anyone to review and digest that information? Based on applicant's actions, how can counsel or anyone trust the accuracy and information contained in the noise report? Or it calls into question any of the documents that have been provided? This should automatically void the report and the entire application, and the project should be automatically denied. I would also like to point out another inaccurate piece of information in the packet that was provided to counsel. The planning commission resolution and approval provided in your council packet shows that the planning commission unanimously approved Project 4O. That is false. The planning commission passed 311 with Chairperson Smith voting no. Why is this important to know? Well, counsel relies upon the planning commission to vet out the details of a project and use their vote to get a barometer of what planning commission is thinking. This incorrect 4O vote gives the appearance to counsel and the general public that all members of the planning commission were in total agreement and support the project. Chairperson Smith was affirmed no. According to his website, his credentials include a Bachelor of Science in Architecture with a concentration in urban planning, and he's been working professionally in his field for about 10 years and think he could be considered an expert, and that's probably why he was selected to not only sit on the planning commission, but be its chairperson. So this is what his concerns include. The project creates more impervious area, which results in more runoff, which will place additional burden on our aging public infrastructure, and also increases pollution to our streams, rivers, and ocean. The argument that the Raising Cane's and car wash projects had to be tied together, an all-or-nothing proposition. Removing existing housing inventory and not replacing it with new or more housing. The project doesn't support the general plan vision of adding multifamily housing in downtown and the immediate emerging multifamily area adjacent to downtown. And the property is not being utilized at its highest and best use. This misrepresentation of the voting rule gives counsel an inaccurate perception and automatically creates a bias when counsel evaluates the project. Actually, I have a recording of his no vote and his reasoning.
That's good, why?
I don't know if you want to hear that. The Ruth White.
I was there. I recorded it. It's online.
All right, I will take a good round. Part of the area on the last project, Raising Cane's, is a thirty-two percent propensity thing and that is going to help with runoff on that project. My concern for this project is that we do the opposite, making more impervious area, which will increase runoff from the site, if you see another one of them. So, the issues in that engineering aspect of it, they also give me some concerns that these two sites together, we are... As Mrs. President with last project, we are the only city in San Diego County that we're members and we are removing housing units without replacing them, doing the two projects together. And with the vision that our community has for, I believe, our downtown quarter, I think that we're looking for more misuse. And I appreciate that misuse goes and for misuse is, as the applicant mentioned, but someone's got to be the first one in order for that to be the case. So, I, I do see the benefits of continuing to rebuild this way and I very much want to work towards beautifying our downtown and making us more environmentally viable. But at the same time, I have concerns around housing runoff and whether does the greatest use of that parcel get given by experienced architecture and designer? I think that it may be used for something other.
Not long ago, Council denied another car wash project a few blocks from this project site. The same concerns the community had then are present now for this project. In fact, in many ways, this project is worse, especially around the transparency and authenticity and accuracy of reports provided by the applicant to the city. If you deny that car wash, please be consistent and deny this one. There are too many cons for this project. It removes existing homes from housing inventory. Residents and businesses are being displaced. It places the residents in a very vulnerable position. It does not support small business. It doesn't support the special needs population. It does not encourage the development of apartments and condominiums. It does not support community health goals. It does not encourage the use of the public transportation, including the trolley. It does not generate any sales tax revenue for the community, not to mention the discrepancies between what was provided to the planning commission and you, Council. The applicant and its consultants and attorneys can fledge you with all sorts of reports that can make your head spin. But at the end of the day, please base your decision on the very simple merits of this project. The merits show that the project is not consistent with the general plan created by you and the citizens of Lemon Grove. As our elected leaders, please do the right thing and approve this appeal, which will be a great long-term decision for the community and one that you can be proud of for years to come. Thank you. Thank you so very much for your presentation. And so I will check with our council members to see if they have questions for you, so you can stay there for a moment. You'll have two questions per council member, starting with council member Snow. At the planning commission, I wasn't there. So were you available at the planning commission?
No, I listened to some of the recording.
You can take the...
Nope, sorry, I forgot about that.
Um, no, one of my team members was there. And we also listened to the recording later. So I think my question's probably more appropriate than for Scott for that part. Um, so... Why do you think that the additional studies are suspect?
Because, simply because they're different. Why would planning commission get one and Council gets a different one? And then at the eleventh hour yesterday, there's another one.
That's a problem.
That is sent in. Just so many, um, different papers makes it suspect. Like what was, why didn't they do it appropriately the first time? And not to mention the fact that planning commission based their decision off of one noise report and you did not get that noise report. That's not right.
Yeah, so were they just, for the additional report, I'm not trying to defend them. I'm just trying to figure out like if there was something weird about the noise report other than the fact that there was multiple. Could it be that they were trying to address the issue that it was on the right site and that the subsequent ones were on the correct site?
Yeah, the second one, sure, they could have been. It doesn't remove the fact that you're going off with different information.
Understood. I see that part of it. I just was trying to dig down into why the other ones might be suspect. I appreciate you pointing that out. Thank you very much. And as a move through finder, I just want to make sure that you know you have two questions and... But I will do a second round until I'll turn this over to a council member of the area.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Ms. Miller, for your very thorough presentation. All the research that you've put into this, all the time, you're presenting very, very eloquently. Thank you. Thank you for bringing to light the fact that there are decisions being made by one body using information, certain information, and then another body using different information. I definitely agree that that's very suspect and strange, very strange, very odd. We're here because there was a planning commission decision made using a set of whole facts or evidence at that time and now we're changing the facts and the evidence in this case. That's odd. That's, I don't really have any questions other than to say thank you for bringing that to our attention. And, oh, actually, and another thing too, you mentioned that there was a, another proposed car wash just a block away, literally a block, like a block away. And Council denied that car wash. And if that is a question, if they are going to deny, if the council majority denies a car wash just a block away, why would they do the same for this one? Thanks for bringing those peculiarities and oddities to the forefront.
Mary P. Timmendosin.
And, and just as a... At this point, Councilmember LaBaron himself approved the other car wash. Just so you know that. And that she was very emphatic about that car wash. I don't know, she doesn't like this one, but she liked the other ones.
So could you explain the discrepancy in the noise study?
It came to, it came to staff's... It came to staff's attention that the noise study basically outlines on a vicinity map the wrong properties and essentially the change was just the vicinity... Basically, just, just to change on the vicinity map between the environmental, the two sound studies were all that we were aware of. So it was more like correction of a typo on the change than being anything that was substantial in the noise study itself. And, and that was the difference that we are aware of in the noise study.
Number two or number three?
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
So... The document provided to the planning commission clearly shows that it was incorrect. And so the planning commission voted on an incorrect noise study. I don't understand how that does not make that vote null. Like I said, it's odd.
Agreed.
Yeah, actually, I, I heard, I'd say that it was a typo. I just need clarification on where the typo is. I'm sorry, can you please be quiet? I'm asking a question. Can you please clarify where the typo is so that we can see it here on the noise study? And then perhaps some clarification can be provided regarding any discrepancies as it relates to the noise study?
Um, I see that you're having a conversation right there about the paperwork, but if you can speak that onto the record so that it's recorded, thank you.
Yes, sorry, so I have what was given to you, which is in your packet. And you can look at this and compare to what I just gave you, which was given to planning commission.
Okay, and so right now, staff is looking to see exactly where the discrepancy is. Because I would like to know exactly where the discrepancy is.
Go ahead and look at the papers.
I asked a question of staff. So I'm going to hear response from staff. But in the meantime, with my second question, I do have a question for our city attorney regarding the legality of such discrepancy. What does that, or how does that impact this particular project if there is a discrepancy?
As the appellate body, you can consider all of the evidence that is in front of you, including the fact that there's a discrepancy. And you can weigh that evidence and make up your own line about what that might mean. There is an option, as you know, when you're hearing an appeal, to send back the materials to the lower body for consideration. So if you feel like there was information that was an oversight or that they didn't perceive that they should have, you can send it back to the planning commission for their consideration. If you review that material and you feel like that is the right thing to do, otherwise you can make a decision based on all of the evidence that's in front of you.
Thank you so very much for providing that clarity in terms of what should be done legally and based on the law. I will check and see if staff is able to identify exactly where the discrepancy is.
Black and white photo version here, so it's difficult to see the colors. I believe it was on the outline on the Exhibit A versus the location map in the study that there is a, an outline over a satellite view that shows the, the site location and the wrong location that follows the Raising Cane's properties as opposed to the Quick Quack properties.
Mike, could I interrupt? Can you identify what page you're on and what you're looking at? Is it, is this a handout that was just provided to the city council?
I haven't seen the, I don't think I've seen the handout.
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at the, the sound studies, the noise impact study for Quick Quack.
And that was included in their packet, is that correct?
That's correct. Which version did we have? It would, so it would be, I believe it would be the number twelve, twenty thousand, twenty-three version. So, and then on the case three of the document? Exhibit A, location map?
So, while there's a temporary hold on conversation, I just sent my two versions over to Michael Fellows so that he can see what we're actually seeing here. Because there are two different versions. One's dated twelve, twenty twenty-three, and the other one's dated, I think it looks like it says five, twenty twenty-four, yes.
So, the location of the... So here we have two location maps in the noise study and the third, the outline over the satellite view is shown in two different locations. And the applicant indicated that that was just a reserve and that they updated the noise study to move over that line and that nothing else changed in the noise study.
Okay, so from what I understand here is that the noise study was conducted and in both versions that we're looking at, the only difference is that, I want to call it like the overlay in the way that they printed it, makes it look different. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. That's, that's, that's what staff, that's what the applicant explained to staff was the difference and that was the cause.
Uh, thanks so very much. I actually had my two questions. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna let the council members ask their next set of two questions. And what I'll do is I'll start with Councilmember Snow. Actually, I'm gonna follow up with that on the, I believe it's nineteen Exhibit F. If you can speak into the mic so we can capture your questions. So it doesn't look this way. It looks like it's split up. Can you explain that?
That's not, that's not a change that I was aware of when reviewing the document.
Come on.
It wasn't exposed to me that only the, the bordered sites, the outlined sites kind of get changed. It looks like that, the sound map would study too, or the sound study would do with that. Maybe we can get a little more information from the applicant.
Maybe I could, you know, everybody else has their consultants and their experts. I have a little team of my own and I would love to ask my team member to come up and speak. Uh, yes, you can have your, your expert come up and speak. Thank you. If you could speak directly into the microphone.
So, an initial... There was the initial, the staff...
Mike.
To eventually accept the planning commission. That was the very first one. It is, they used, when they did their noise study, it appears that they used Raising Cane's parcel. When they used the Raising Cane's parcel, it appears as if they do their noise study or they do their monitoring system based off of that parcel. The second piece that came down, excuse me, the second report that was put in for you is that they adjusted it, but it's not just a typographical error, it's a whole new noise study. It has different numbers on the sound setting. And there was this third, still appropriate parcel, but it has different numbers. So it calls into question, number one, when they did the initial study, this expert didn't find the right parcel. So it calls into question how much attention to detail, were they doing their job right? Who knows? So now the second, the second one, and you can look at the sound study. You know, there's a, there's a sheet in there that shows where they took the, they said the monitoring. Clearly shows it on the, uh, Raising Cane's parcel. So even if you show a different outline, the monitoring is still on the Raising Cane's parcel. So the whole thing, you know, who's on first? I don't know. Yeah, that's the third one that came, I think. In a five hundred page packet saying, hey, and it didn't say here are the changes. It just said, here's a five hundred page packet with some changes. And so you're looking through five hundred pages. What's the change? There's no red line, there's no explanation. So that's pretty much what it is. Really quickly, can I see Stephanie Becker regarding your speaker stuff that you submitted to me?
Okay, um, thank you. So, um, I think I'm going to drop it, um, and turn it over to council member Snow.
Um, so thank you very much. This is giving me a lot to think about and, um, I'll hold off on other questions because I think that people who did the studies clarified, but thank you.
Council member LeBaron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't have any questions right now.
Mariposa.
I, I think it's, it's very clear to me that the noise study was done on the wrong property. And so what, what do we do with that? I, I think, I think we need to have a noise study done on the correct property. I mean, it's, it's, it's clear, totally clear to me.
How many chances do they get? The planning commission used the incorrect noise study.
I don't see how we can make a decision on this without, it should be denied.
And, uh, so with that said, I want to check with our city attorney to see what we can do here because I want to make sure that what we are looking at here, um, we want, we want to make sure that, that the planning commission is looking at the same thing that we're looking at here. Uh, so, uh, you know, legally, what, what can we do?
Well, like I said before, the, the evidence in front of you is what you weigh, um, including new, including new facts and new evidence. Regardless of whether the planning commission has seen it or not. But if it weighs heavily on your mind that they did not consider the correct evidence or the correct facts in order to make a decision, an option for you is to send it back to the planning commission.
Or you can deny it.
Uh, thank you so very much. And, uh, so.
Where's it, it's like just for you.
Um, I think, uh, before we move, uh, any further here, it's important that we hear from the applicant. Perhaps the applicant can provide some clarity for us. Uh, so thank you so very much. Uh, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to the applicant, Donald Sibley. Uh, he will have fifteen minutes to provide a presentation. And then afterwards, um, if it is a council member's desire, uh, we can ask a few questions of the applicant, um, and for. He wants to use the mic and please speak directly into the mic so that everyone can hear you.
Good evening, city councilman members and Honorable Mayor. My name's Don Schreiber, I'm the QuikQuack. I'm pleased to stand before you at this time. The red hair that was presented to you is nothing more than that. It was a effective, uh, noise study that they used the wrong site plan on or an exhibit. We were originally, when we started this progress or this program, um, on the end, uh, where Raising Cane was, they didn't print it loud for the developer. We removed over. We were, uh, moved over into the interior part. Our, um, when we, all of our site plans that were conducted to, uh, given to the city council and or to the planning commission was on the right site plan. Um, our noise study was also on that. When it was brought to our attention, we corrected the site plan. That's why the second date is there, dated just before our city, uh, planning commission hearing. So it was effective. And then the updated one was again us trying to demonstrate our effectiveness, the, the, the new information that we had in our blowers as we tightened up our, our project. Again, our numbers are in line with the city, uh, code and we never deviated from that. It was always accurate with that in our actual site plan. But before I go too much further to that, QuikQuack was founded in two thousand. We had a vision of which we could do, we could help the community. And, um, our motto is changing lives for better. And how we do that is we enter into your community and we take, uh, very care of the assets they entrusted with, with the land. We develop a product that is ideal, that is, um, enjoyable to visit, um, beautiful to look at. We use the utilities and the resources that the city offers to us. Um, with our fees that we pay, we are very conscientious of our recycling, better than any other car wash out there. Uh, we use twenty-one gallons per car wash. And the homeowner, when they're doing their car wash in their, in their driveway, uses a hundred and fifty gallons. So our catch in this is that we are much more conscientious, much more conservative. And then we recycle all of that water, which the homeowner then, when they're recycling or when they're washing their car, they, they wash down the store area. Why another car wash? That's often what we're going to be asked about, so I'll preempt it. I say it this way, consumers are demanding more convenience. Um, their busy schedules with timeline constraints. In the nineties, fifty percent of homeowners were washing their cars. Um, now we're finding that it's eighty percent. When they were doing it themselves, it was one to two hour chore per car at the house. Now if they either have a QuikQuack car wash, it's three minutes on their way to a haircut or on the way to home, or on the way to visit mom and dad. Uh, it's, it's very convenient for them. And why are we doing it? It's because the consumers are asking for it. We have two hundred and fifty stores, we're currently building more stores. We have historical data that shows all of this information. We wouldn't be building these stores if the consumers did not want it and they want us. Uh, what we do is we offer a membership program. The membership program is where they're able to purchase a, uh, a membership and be able to use that at any other car washes, um, whether it's in California or any other states. We have the ability to read license plates. You'll be tracked that individual when they come in, know what car washes they're using. We can enter them into our car wash tunnel in thirty seconds and process them back. So they're on our lot less than three and a half minutes in their lot. We are projecting at our highest speed that we're about thirty-two car washes per hour. That means that we're processing one every thirty seconds. We do not have a queue involved. That is a major concern that everyone has, but we process our cars so fast. Um, every thirty seconds, a car is entering a tunnel, a tunnel, and three minutes later, they're driving off the road. Sixty to seventy-five percent do not use our vacuum. They continue along with their chores for the, the weekend or, or going off to work when work comes after work. Um, we find that the convenience is that they want to wash their car. It's the most expensive item that they own outside of their house. And as you find, that most constituents are renters at this point. And so that car is their most important item and they want to take pride in that car. And they're, and they're washing that car, trying to maintain it, trying to keep that, uh, that expensive item from looking frustrating. And so it, it's a very important item for them to have that car washed. Um, we, we are changing lives for better. We're good neighbors. We are very, uh, we've been working with the city council or with the planning, uh, director and the planning commission with the requests that they have. We are completely agreeable with them. They wanted us to remove a queuing lane and put more landscaping. I would venture that we're probably forty percent now with that third queuing. And we've demonstrated that all of our sequa is in line. Our sound study can be explained because of that, uh, that site plan that was used in error. And once it was, once it was corrected and fixed it and resubmitted, they've worked. Uh, we, we want to conserve your resources. We understand that. We, we want to provide a place where employees will come in and have pride in their. Our employees make pretty good money. Um, our, our store managers will be, should make more than a hundred thousand dollars with their employees. So it's a high paying job line. I, I don't think that we're going to find that at other car washes in town. So we, we want to be here, we're excited to be here, we want to be wanted here. We know that once we're here, your, your constituents will be happy and will be good stewards of the property and of our, uh, membership.
Thank you so very much. And, uh, so, um, I'll, uh, see if our council members have questions for you. Uh, it'll be two questions for council members, starting with, uh, council member Snow.
Um, Mike, one of the issues that I have is, um, comparing these. I was wondering if any of the noise studies were done overlaying the two noise maps between Raising Cane and QuikQuack Car Wash. Um, are you able to speak to that? Do you know whether that was done?
It, it was not done. It was using our site plan that we submitted to the city. So I, I don't know who their expert is or what his background is. So I, I would be kind of curious as to what his background is to make these assertions. If it's just reading the table, then you read it wrong, but our information is accurate.
Um, and then I'm looking at two different noise studies. So I'm looking at the one that's dated eight five twenty twenty-four and then another one that's dated five twenty-eight twenty twenty-four. Um, so these are the ones with the corrected sites. Can you explain, um, you got into it a little bit, but what has changed between, uh, May and August?
Our environmental council will be able to answer that.
What changed between the latest and greatest of the seven noise is you took the planning commission. Microphone.
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry. Yeah, please come closer to it. Thank you.
Uh, we took the planning commission conditions of approval to remove, uh, one queuing lane and to add that landscaping next to the houses to the west. And that's now been incorporated into the August noise study. So that's the change that was made. Um, and I believe that's explained in the cover letter. Uh, we also provided the other information that you have in that packet is the updated site plan, updated landscaping plan, um, and updated air quality study. And that will all be subject to the conditions of approval that this council put on the project. But we wanted to show you what the planning commission conditions look like and the benefits that those achieve to the noise. Um, and the answer was it reduced the noise, um, on the property line to the west. I want to say by four decibels. And then also reduced the noise, uh, to the residences off the surface. So there's an explanation in the noise study about. And I just also, well, I wanted to point out that the May that noise study was presented to the planning commission. So the updated exhibit that shows the correct site was before the planning commission made their decision. It wasn't, uh, something that you guys are seeing yet, they did not.
Hi, council member LeBaron. Oh, I'm so sorry. Uh, your time, you still have time to speak, but I was going to do something that you were done with your presentation. I just want to verify.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member LeBaron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, uh, Mariposa.
I'm still struggling with these noise studies. So this, this is the one dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, okay? And it shows the equipment placed on the Raising Cane's site, the most, okay? Then this is the one dated May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. It shows the equipment placed, it's the same picture, the equipment is still on the Raising Cane's site. And then the other, the other one dated yesterday, doesn't have pictures of the equipment and where it was being placed. Do you have those pictures of where the equipment was placed on this site?
To clarify two points. We're speaking to the equipment that measures the, the same noise. That was placed on the adjacent site. There's an explanation in the August noise study from our noise expert that the noise on the car wash site would actually be less than that Raising Cane's site due to the distance from the roadways which provide the predominant amount of noise. As to measuring the noise from the project, that was done in the May study as well as the August study on the Raising Cane's site. Also, the original study was done on the QuikQuack site. The measurements were on the QuikQuack site for noise impacts of the project and all three studies, the error in that first study was simply ambient footage provided.
Okay, so, so this, this shows, um, this is a noise study where the project was completed. Correct. Okay, and the, but the, and it makes sense for them putting.
It's ambient noise that, that those microphones are picking up.
Okay.
It's because it's not measuring a car wash that it's, it's ambient noise. It's just picking up from there for your, your measurement of sound.
Like a starting spot.
Yeah, exactly.
Like this is how much noise is already here.
Exactly.
But even though you put it on Raising Cane's and not the car wash site, car wash site would be much quieter because of where it's.
Exactly. It's, it's because it's not built, hypothetical at that point, they have to use calculations based upon the manufacturer and they have to run those calculations based upon the design of the building and they project that out and then they standard.
Thanks for bearing with us. None of us are engineers or experts, honest, so, um, and, but yeah, so you can see why we're confused. Because it was confusing information that...
Completely understand. We just ask us. I mean, I...
Yeah, no, I get it. So in conclusion, the planning commission did not get incorrect information.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that. And then, wow, to ask one more question leading up to the current copy that we have. I just wanted to verify that this most recent document slipped into consideration the recommendations of the planning commission so that it would demonstrate how much more the noise will be reduced if all of those recommendations were here too.
One hundred percent. We took their recommendations and started moving forward with our design and with the landscaping, with the sound study, so that it's all accurate based upon their findings when they made the recommendations. We accepted and we just moved on. And so we want to present that to you to say it's even better than where it was.
Thank you. Okay. I think we got it now. Okay. I will do one more round of questions, starting with Councilmember Snow.
This one's for staff because you had indicated in your presentation that they were CEQA compliant. Did I understand that right?
Yes.
And then in the slides, I suppose when you went through it, you indicated that they were exempt from CEQA compliance. So can you explain to me that? Are they CEQA compliant in the process?
Yes. Yes, the project is CEQA compliant. Project, so the CEQA guidelines with this date list certain projects that can be categorically exempt on CEQA. And one of them is category exemption fifteen-three-three-two. It then lists certain requirements to meet that exemption in the CEQA guidelines. And staff determine that this project does meet all the requirements that fall under that exemption.
Now I understand better. So they're CEQA compliant because they're exempt, okay. So you're not doing anything to improve the property like the Raising Cane's? Is this what you're going to be helping out with that?
Correct. Nor are we adding anything to it.
If you can please speak into the mic, thank you.
Correct. And neither are we adding anything to it to take us out of compliance. So if it's where...
Councilmember LeBaron. Can I have any further comments? Mayor Pata Mendoza? Oh, one second. Mayor Pata Mendoza, I think Councilmember LeBaron has a question now. Sorry, I misspoke. I meant to say that I don't have any questions. I do love our job delivering and hearing from the public. Thank you, Mayor Pata Mendoza.
I have no further questions right at this moment with it. I may have any questions.
Thank you so very much. We will now have public comments. So you can go ahead and step away from the podium. Public comment from the audience. If you are willing to speak on this matter, you can fill out a speaker slip. And I do have some here. And so I will start with Noel Dealick. And if he can speak directly into the mic, would you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick here. I think Councilperson Mendoza was asking about the third...
Microphone.
Study. So it shows, I have a copy, a PDF copy right here. And it shows the two clearly on the Raising Cane's parcel. But at the end of the day, he's not a noise expert. And I think it's really important that you decide the facts based on what you have in front of you. They did not have an appropriate noise study. It was very disingenuous and quietly sliding things in.
You have to go in that city.
Let them count. Their credibility, their honesty is huge. So the worst case is, I mean, to me, if I was on your seat, I would just deny it because they didn't do the appropriate work. But the best case for them is that they have to do a whole new study and application, show us that it's done right. It's really my fault to me that they can come in here and they can talk to you and then sleep talking with you. Here's what it really says. It is not moving along. If you look at the pictures, they show exactly where they took the measurements. They have vertical showing, cameras, I think, were mentioned. It shows where they placed them on a vertical basis. I don't know what else. Pictures tells a thousand words. Actions speak our words. Their action words give something. They didn't tell staff. Staff is the first person they talk to. I think the commission should have reviewed this in caucus. The kindergarten future caucus. Kind of crazy. But I think at the worst case, I mean, I'm sorry, it really should be denied. Approval should be held up and approved. That's the right thing to do. Worst case is that they submit a whole new application. Take bad information like that and say, okay.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Kathleen Stather. And I apologize if I forgot your last name wrong. Kathleen. I'll put the speaker slip to the side for a moment and move on to Ken King, followed by Neil. And unfortunately, I can't read out your last name. Can I be in?
Madam Mayor, I have like thirty seconds. Can I say one last name?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
And if you can set the clock for thirty seconds, thank you.
You reminded me of something. Roger, who is sitting here, he had to leave. He had to go back to work, go to sleep, go to work in the morning. He asked me to, you know, just apologize if you couldn't stay. But, you know, there's a lot of people that are no longer here or older people that were not in favor of the Raising Cane's. Most of those people have all left. So I don't want you to walk away from here because if there's less people speaking, it means that there's, I don't want you to equate that with there's nobody who's interested. There's a lot of people interested that need to go home. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And now we have Ken King, followed by Neil.
Good afternoon. I'm opposed to a car wash. Not bringing in any money for us. That's exonerating. Can you hear me? A car wash doesn't bring in the tax dollars that we need. So I understand why we're doing that. We have a landlord that's doing a land grab to push out all these corporate businesses that we don't need. We don't need another, you don't need another car wash. We have a million car washes. What we need is people to have a home. And what you guys are doing is you're tearing down someone's home for your benefit. Somebody here is getting their pockets filled. I don't care who, what you say, someone's getting their pockets filled. You're all up for reelection. Not you. You shouldn't even have been elected.
Cheers to that.
Your friend.
I think that it is the public's time. It's the public's time to speak. And so I want to make sure that the public has their opportunity to speak. I will give you your time. But I want to make sure that everyone knows and understands the importance of allowing the dialogue to come forward, but also too, that everyone is heard. So I'm asking for respect and decorum. Can you reset his spot so that he has the appropriate time? Green light? There you go.
And once again, she's immature as usual, speaking out on her phone. But yet are you questioning her being on her phone and questioning LeBaron being on her phone? You have different rules for different people. That is not how the city should run. You are a liar. You did not speak for me. You went to the county and told people that the people of Lemon Grove wanted a tiny home project. I'm choice, but we did not want it.
Sir, I know that we have people here that want to speak on this topic.
We have over four hundred petitions here for people who wanted...
Please stick to this topic right now.
I spoke to that topic.
Okay, so save those comments for the end of the meeting. We'll hear those comments.
You're hearing the math, but you guys...
I will ask you to step away from the podium if you have no more comments so that we can move on to the next speaker regarding this particular item.
She's on your side as well. But Jerry Jones says, but he told you guys all...
Please step away from the podium. Next, we have Neil, followed by Bear. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Neil Capen. Sorry, I already said that again. I was the person who was trying to build the other car wash down the street a couple of years ago. So I first identified the property in seventy-four thirty-one Broadway, July of twenty-twenty. I had zoning, it had zoning in place that allowed for a car wash with a minor use permit. We designed the site, and each time city staff raised a concern, I had studies done and revised the design to create the best version possible. After approval by planning commission, in which we met all five standards that have been mentioned too many times tonight, in twenty-two, in twenty-twenty-two, an appeal came in from Katie Dexter, who as far as we know does not live in Lemon Grove or California. She was an associate of former councilman Jerry Jones. Jerry Jones seemed to lead the charge in not wanting any more car washes as he stated there were too many and the city needed housing. Now it seems Jerry Jones is in favor of displacing existing homes and allowing additional uses as he had wrote a letter in favor of it. Is Mr. Jones now a consultant? Why would he write a letter in favor now that he is not a councilperson? I spent a lot of money on additional architecture and studies to prove that the site would be a great addition of Broadway and clean up a constant issue of homelessness on the site, which still is present, even though the building that was existing has been torn down. It seems to me the city wanted one project to happen and another one to go away. The word that comes to mind after hearing all this tonight is collusion. Thank you for your time.
Accurate.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Karen, followed by Gloria. And with Gloria's comments, that will complete our public comment portion of the meeting. And there will be no more speakers for this particular item.
Hello, Council. All right. So it seems to me that these two projects are combined, and I'm not sure why the studies are not combined. It's eighteen hours a day that Raising Cane's will be open, and the car wash will be fourteen hours a day. The cane will have noise. I'm sure it will be devastating for the people that live within the community. Again, traffic, eighty cars per hour from the information that Inksave, for a total of two hundred and seventy-four, I'm quite give or take, they are popular. And flat, thirty-two cars per hour, which is four hundred and forty-eight hertz per day. That's a lot of traffic to be on Broadway, especially when the trolley tracks are less than around point two miles from this location. Which, when those tracks, when they come through the trolley and those are installed, nobody wants to be stuck in that traffic. We can even talk about this prior. Point two miles of trolley traffic. How many people will be late getting to work, picking up their children, doing their errands? Let's face it, most people work two jobs to live in Sandy Oak County. This is a problem. But we're here and it's almost, what, eleven-thirty? This is my one of two evenings off a week during the weekdays. My special guess is where does the recycled water go? And then again with the storms. Storm drains, we have a single system in Sandy Oak County, so all the water that goes into the drains goes to one system. And when the storms come, that is overwhelmed and the pump stations are overwhelmed. The city council thought of doing independent studies on the noise and the traffic themselves. Because let's face it, statistics is lying with numbers. We didn't take into account that both these locations for Broadway can also have additional traffic on Pacific Avenue from people turning off of Broadway, coming down going to business, going Pacific Avenue, and then coming up and going east on Broadway. Again, I'm concerned that the traffic were the individuals and not taken to accumulation of how it'll affect the community overall. Because these projects are tied. I'm done.
I thank you so very much. And as I mentioned, the public comment portion of the meeting is now closed for this particular agenda item. With Gloria, if you could come up, please.
Can you hear me? Because I am a property owner, a complex executive. The car wash is down further west. But I do have some concerns about that car wash. Couple of years ago, I had my mainline, the whole house fixed because as you know, Lemon Grove is very old. Therefore, our pipes, our water system, everything is very old. And it gets plugged up big time, especially, as she mentioned, when there are storms. So if the car wash ever has issues with that, with the water, whatnot, how is that going to affect some of the residents that are on the other side of Pacific? How long do we have to wait until it gets fixed? The other thing is, very simple question. Quick fact, my daughter works in Riverside. I've actually seen them. Very nice. They are, they do look nice. But because we are in the Grove, this will be the fifth car wash that we have. I was wondering, I'm curious, what is the general cost to have your car washed? Because right there on Broadway next to McDonald's, it's now eight dollars per car wash. And yes, they do armor all your tires. So it's, to me, it's like, are we bringing a Nordstrom type of thing, business? Well, we could maybe use just some mom and pop type of car wash? Things for the level of that we are. I'm all for beautification of Lemon Grove. I've been a resident over sixty-five years. But these are concerns I have as well. And as Councilmember said, LeBaron, you know, it's the people. It's the people, it's their future we're concerned about. And so that's a concern for me. And also the securities that they have at that car wash. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And now I will turn it over to David for the five-minute rebuttal.
Madam Mayor, before we turn it over to the rebuttal comments, I'd just like to note that the city clerk's office has received written communications on this matter. Obvious of those letters have been registered to all the citizens of the DIA's tonight and copies of those letters will be sent near the community center.
Thank you so very much. And so David, privately, if you could please approach the podium for rebuttal. And you will have five minutes.
Going to give my five minutes to Ken.
Mayor, City Council, we heard comments concerning a number of issues tonight. The first one being general pain. first one being general plan. The first thing our letter sent to you yesterday says and provides is a host of reasons why this project is just a general plan. We have provided the facts to support those assertions, provided a noise study, provided an air quality study, provided a traffic study, we've provided a lighting photometric plan showing the lighting that is properly fielded, but also provides the site with security. We've heard the noise concerns. We have addressed them per the planning commission conditions of approval. Um, I mentioned earlier that, uh, with those planning commission conditions, the noise of the project would be well below city standards and would be reduced from what the planning commission considered reflects the neighboring properties to the west as well as to the south. Uh, with those conditions, the project would cause only an imperceptible, unvisable increase to the residents to the west and no increase to the light of the south. Cumulative impacts would be considered. With noise, there aren't any. We're only creating a one-decibel increase to the west, which is further from the Cane's state, no increase to the south. Cumulative traffic was considered as well as future traffic, and our traffic engineers, they're, if you have any questions on traffic. Uh, cumulative air quality was considered, those issues have been addressed. Uh, we heard concerns of runoff. The project will be about forty percent impermeable with landscaping plan, and the waters from the car wash will drain to the sewer, not to the, uh, rainwater or wastewater.
Storm drain. Thank you.
Um, we've heard that this commission denied another car wash. We would ask that you consider this car wash on its merits, kind of what are required to do. Think of this thing. Um, as with Raising Cane's, there would be pedestrian improvements, um, and we would help fill commercial vacancies in the city in an area that currently experiences about fifty percent empty rate. So with that, it's very...
Thank you very much for your time.
I think so very much. And now we turn it over to Carol Miller for a five-minute rebuttal.
Okay, um, so first of all, please remember that besides the noise study, there are other failures of this application, that it shows a four-oh vote, which is the information that you received, showed a four-oh vote, when in fact Chair Kristen Smith voted no, and they gave you his reasons, multiple reasons, um, that it does not bring in sales tax revenue, that there are also multiple other objectives of the general plan that it does not meet. I just, I stand firm in my assertion that the problem with the noise study means that either the project is denied, or the applicant needs to fully resubmit their application. I, um, I also, I can't quite believe that they could stand up here and just tell you, oh, no, no, that was right. That's actually right. You see what you see with your own eyes, what was submitted at different times. You see the red lines, you see the numbers. So how can somebody just stand here and say, no, no, that's not what happened? Please take that into consideration. And as well, um, thank you for listening to the community members who support this appeal, and please take that into...